I'd like to call to order the committee, the whole meeting for Tuesday, June 10th, 2025. First item on our agenda this evening is roll call.
Barazah. Lancy.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Malley.
Here.
Malone.
Here.
Sulfah. Wolf.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Lohman.
Here.
Peeper.
Here.
Ferenbach.
Here.
Anderson.
Session will be late.
Okay. Vocal singer. Eleven.
All right, have the necessary quorum. Move on to item two, which is a reminder to speak into the microphone if you come up today for the VATV recording and broadcast. And then next would be item three, approval of the minutes from May 25th, or I'm sorry, May 13th, 2025, and May 27, 2025. Any questions or comments? Can I get a motion to recommend to council?
I'll move.
Second.
All right, moment. Second over here. Lehman, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do we have any items to be removed, added, or changed this evening? Nothing? Okay. Then we'll move to item five for matters from the public for items not on the agenda. If anybody's here for anything not on the agenda. Come on up.
Hello. Good evening. Spite strips are, make bad neighbors, and I have witnessed bad neighbors enforcing spite strips in the city of Batavia. And I think there's an opportunity with city staff and with the city council to eliminate all spite strips in the city of Batavia. And I would challenge city council to take action to identify all existing spite strips in the city of Batavia and to find a way to eliminate all spite strips in the city of Batavia.
Inform me what you're talking about, Dan.
Spite strips are narrow strips of land that prevent people access to public roadways from their property or prevent developers from developing land because they don't have access to it from public roadways, things like that.
Okay. I'm not aware of anything. I haven't, you know, ever heard.
There are just a handful left in Batavia. There's already an ordinance on file that eliminates future spite strips, but they didn't go backwards and they didn't eliminate all the existing spite strips. So it would be the existing ones that need to go.
Enlighten us. Has this ever come up before or prevented somebody from using a piece of property?
I'm not aware of any specifics recently. I'm sure that there may be some, you know, remnant pieces of land that, you know, are between a right of way and a private property, you know, in different areas. So it depends on how the deeds were done in, you know, history. So, you know, there are conveyances of land and sometimes they provided a strip of land in between adjacent property and maybe a right of way. I'm not sure, but I'd be glad to, you know, hear more specifics about, you know, what it is. But yeah.
We had G I S data, right, available? We have people that can research that. So it shouldn't be that hard to look for strips of land that are five feet wide or less throughout the city.
Is there something that was brought to your attention that brought this up?
There is.
Okay.
Something very specific, yeah.
Okay. If you want to get in touch with me, we can discuss.
We can talk about it specifically if you'd like me to.
Sure.
But I prefer in this form to keep it not that way.
Okay.
I'm aware of one. I'm aware of one in our ward, too, so I can speak to that one. We can chat with staff about it.
Certainly you could talk to me about it if you'd like, Scott, being in the moment. So I could certainly talk to you about it and see what the situation is.
Well, we can talk about it, but I'd like, I'd want to challenge city council to take action and eliminate all spite strips. Come up with legislation, do something very active and very proactive to eliminate spite strips.
I guess I'd never really heard of that in any issues in town. But Tim, you want to comment?
Yeah, I was just going to throw it out there. Why, why don't we eliminate them if they exist? And is it a lot of work? Is it a lot of cost?
It's private property. I mean, the spite strips are private property, so you'll be looking to convey the property to an adjacent owner or his right of way, depending on the circumstance. You know, I'm not specifically aware of any ones that we've had issues with, not to say there aren't, but, but the subdivision code does prevent that from happening going forward. So if somebody subdivides the land, they can't provide a spite strip. Yes.
Okay. I'd like to, you know, I guess know more about it, know if there are any actual issues. If you want to just send me an email or something and let me know where that is or what.
Sure, I can, I can do that. We could talk after the meeting. It's fine.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
For record reflect, Alderman, Sulfah is here at 7:10.
Is this going to be shared with all of council? So we're all aware of the?
Yeah, I can copy and send it to them. I just wanted to, you know, if he wants to discuss it, we'll do that. All right. Any other matters from the public? Okay. Not, Alderman, back to consent agenda.
Yes, the consent agenda reads as follows. For approval, the Cow executive session minutes from May 27th, 2025, on the purchase of real estate. Approval of the Cow executive session minutes from April 29th, 2025, collective bargaining and personnel. Resolution 2025-83-R, authorization to purchase equipment maintenance for network storage devices, and resolution 2025-31-R, financial systems hosting. I move we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second. Second by Sulfah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Twelve vote. All right, then we'll move on to item seven, which is a presentation by Water Street Studios for the Gateway mural request.
Ever plugged in a little?
Oh, it goes on the post.
There's the post. There's a plug-in.
Okay. All the way down here. I'm going to pop up the letter first. I believe this was distributed to everyone on council. Okay, so many of you are already aware of the project at hand, but we have gotten permission and actual buy-in from the property owner at the Comedy Vault, the south-facing wall of 18 East Wilson. I can show you a video of that or a little photo of that as well. Last night we were at HPC just to present the project. That material has already been painted, so with our current ordinances, there's nothing that says we have to get an approval to repaint that structure. Currently, we have a request for qualifications out to the public. We've already received about 10. It's only been out for about a week and we've received 10 people that are interested, very talented artists. They've sent over portfolios. The committee, Anita, Abby, Lori Baderman, and several other community members will be reviewing all the requests we get and will assess their, they give a little brief description of what they are envisioning. We're looking for something that will be a welcoming statement to the town. We're calling it the City of Good Energy with a nod to our historic city slogan, but with a modern twist that we feel represents the community as a whole. I feel like Batavia is known as being a pretty friendly community that welcomes a lot of people. We have lots of volunteers, lots of artists, and just a very vibrant community. So we thought it would be a great way to say we're the community that's got good energy, we've got a vibe. So I am coming to you today on behalf of the Batavia Public Art Initiative and Water Street Studios to see if the council would be interested in making a monetary commitment towards the mural. We have a budget of $20,000 that we're striving to achieve. The property owner has committed $5,000. This will be done through a series, through several different ways. We're applying for grants. We are seeking donations from the public and fundraising, we have a campaign going on. So it's, when we started the public art initiative, that was already over two years ago, we were told to come to council to ask about any sort of contributions, and this is actually the first time that we've had to do so. So with the Wave Petunia, that was all funded by an individual company. And then with the series, with mural series here on the east side of the wall, we were able to do, donate, secure all the funds we needed for those as well. So we would really love your support. Does anyone have any questions about the project at hand?
Do you have any questions?
Well, I'll just reiterate my request made a while back, that I would love to see anytime we're doing a public improvement project around the city, that we allocate 1% for the arts and that we make beautification and public art just a real focus point and a thing we invest in. I think this is something that brings a lot of interest, a lot of pride, a lot of, a lot of good energy to our town, and it's something that I think these volunteers are working really hard at, and I think that the city should have some investment in it each time we do one of these projects.
And I like these kind of murals where they stick out in different spots and, you know, take what's an ugly back of a building and turn it into something that somebody's going to talk about because it's there. You know, I really feel like when we get the ramps done, we need to do another one right there. There's this giant canvas there, you know, whatever comes of it, you know, it's a big, big spot that deserves to have something on it and not just brick or concrete. So I'm all in favor of support of this.
Anybody else?
I just have a question since I'm new here. Abby, you mentioned that you wanted to allocate 1%. So for the projects that we have, the city has given money to, where does that money come from? And what would 1% look like? How much money is that? I'm just curious what the background is.
It was something mentioned to me once, and it's probably way too much money for some projects, like for example, the, what did we spend on Prairie and Wilson? Forty million, like what was that?
Four million.
Four million. So if 1%, that would have been a pretty impressive art project. So maybe there's a cap on that, right? But when we do those types of projects to always make sure we're integrating some sort of beautification, some sort of art into that area and take the opportunity when we're massively changing an area to think about it from a more artistic point of view. So this, I was just repeating that, but this doesn't necessarily qualify for that. This isn't a project that we're necessarily working on, but it is an area of interest. It's an area that we are obviously investing a lot in across the street or that community groups are investing a lot of time and energy into. So it just makes sense to me.
So follow-up, then, where would the money come from for this type of project?
So what I understand Abby to be suggesting is that as we approach projects and we budget for them, we would plan for that 1%. Other projects, I think you will find that it is naturally incorporated into it. Very soon we'll be bringing the, we just received the concept plans for the, the public restrooms on, and that includes a whole, I'll call it a parklet, really. I mean, it's a beautiful landscaped area that contains art elements in it. We were also talking with Bonnie and the Public Arts Commission on incorporating murals into the bike ramp project that is being installed over there. But again, at $3.3 million, I'm not sure that it will require 1%.
I don't think we have to go crazy with that. I just think that we have to think about that. Every one of those projects deserves something like that.
Yeah. Am I doing my math right? 1% on 3 million is 30,000? Is that, is my math right on that? Right? And, you know, we asked for 20,000 here, so actually I think 30,000 could be appropriate.
Absolutely.
But that's beside, yeah. First off, yes, I mean, this sounds great. I love the concept here. I think it's appropriate for the city to allocate that money. You're asking for 2,500, is that, is that right? Is it appropriate to kind of say, is there a way we can promise that money in a way that leverages it into more money? Like a stretch goal or like, you know, we'll give you, you know, 2,500, yeah, campaign match? I don't know, I'm just brainstorming here. Last thing, I kind of meant to say that second, but also I do want to second the idea of making a policy to add in, whether it's 1%, whether it's half a percent, whatever it is. So I think we should probably schedule a time to just talk about what that policy would look like and get that on a cow in the future, if that's appropriate to say. So I'm sorry, I meant to say that first.
I would think that this money, given where the building is, might be available out of a TIF or out of the general fund, one of the two. I don't want to speak for administration funds, but we could always spend that, too.
With the ramp project, we're getting a little bit light on the TIF funds in one and three. This is in TIF number three.
This is in three, okay. You know, I think it's a small enough ask that I don't really worry. I mean, a lot of times we have money in budgets that doesn't get spent, so I think we can find that. But I think we're right. I think we need to schedule something to talk about this because this is an active group. They are going to come back for more projects in different spots, and there's a lot of places in town that are going to maybe ask for that or, you know, kind of require that, that we think about how we're going to do that.
I was going to mention, I know a lot of other communities use like hotel motel tax. I don't believe we have anything to apply for that, unfortunately.
Rub it in.
But I think it's really smart, what you're talking about, to come up with a new creative way that can set aside some of those funds to allocate towards projects like this.
I know we're working a lot right now in the South Street corridor, and so this is just in line with everything we're trying to do there. I mean, the Park District has done significant work already with improving that area, and so I just see this as a huge win.
A local artist has contacted me about the South River Street residential development and asked that if we could talk to the developer about putting a five-point, a five-foot by five-foot concrete pad. He is considering donating an art piece for that project.
I want to clarify, it's actually in TIF, TIF one.
TIF one? Okay. This is located in TIF one, which ends at the end of the year.
Okay. So it would come out of general fund, then?
Yes.
Probably. Okay. Does anybody want to make the motion for that request of 2,500?
So moved.
Second. So the motion by Malone, second by Malley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. That carries. That'll go on the city council agenda and then we'll get that processed and figure out when you get the check.
Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. All right, moving on to item eight, which is ordinance 2025-23, amending city code related to electric and water meters. Who's going to present that from staff? Just a minute, we're going to discuss this before we have you come up.
Good evening. Public Works was approached at looking at potentially, looking at how we meter houses to remove the radio from the meter to help a resident. So both electric and water divisions were looking into that. Our water division was able to readily get those meters. Electric, we needed to look into that a little bit further. We thought there was a longer lead time and we were able to secure those a little bit sooner. So in the meantime, we were working on looking at modifying our ordinance to address those concerns. We have made great strides and efforts on getting these radio meters in there so we can go through the town with our collections and just get those in there, also tied into our system. Great example, unfortunately, the last few days, Tanalus is what we use for electric, and our electric division was able to instantly see where a lot of the outages were occurring. So those would take that capability away, but as I mentioned, Steve and Jeremy have been working diligently to kind of look at, oops, look at those different meter options. We refined an ordinance, and you guys have that in your packet, and we want to limit the amount that, we do this as we are trying to improve service reliability, being able to see where outages and issues are. We've also had instances where being able to see those meters, we're able, on water, we were able to reach out to industrial, commercial client and let them know their meter looked a little bit higher than typical, and it traced back to a leaking toilet. So with those enhancements, we're able to help all of our residents and our businesses, but we do understand that there are certain circumstances. So that is where we put this agreement together, and we have limited it to 12 right now. And that's kind of where we stand. We have the agreement in here. Anybody that would be looking at moving forward with doing this would have to sign that agreement. We would have that on file, and we would look at scheduling service to read those meters manually when we're in that area for the drive-by readings. So with that, I don't know if anybody has any questions?
So I was looking at the, the code and the proposed rates. So the first one, it says the fee to, for a non-radio, does that mean whether it be water or electric, or is that both of them together?
Or individually.
Okay. Because in addition to that, they would also be charged $100 non-refundable fee to remove that? And is that for both of them or just one of them?
Did we put that together for both of them? Yes. Sorry.
Okay. So the first one is for each one individually, the second one is for them combined?
Correct.
Okay. And that's like automatic because the first one is the fee for the new, for the new meter, and the other one is to remove them? Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions, Kevin?
Yeah. You know, first, thanks for, for doing all this. I know there's been some back and forth on this, and it seems like a good, a good plan to help meet the need that we've been presented with, but still protect our interest. I think that's good. I'm curious, so we're setting the, the limit at 12 customers, so if 12 folks in the city want it, we're able to accommodate them. If the 13th wants it, they're kind of out of luck. Is that kind of correct?
We would have to probably reevaluate at that time.
Reevaluate. Okay. And are we confident that we can get 12 total meters if needed? I guess 24, really, if we're talking 12 electric, 12 water?
Yes, we already have.
We have the electric meters in stock now.
In stock? Okay. And so we'll be kind of holding on, we kind of have those in inventory and we're kind of holding on to those?
Yeah, that's correct. We ordered 16 for spares. We have 12 in stock, so they're here now.
Okay. Okay. Okay, thank you. That kind of answers my question.
I know it's been a few months since this was last before us, and it was before you were standing here, but my understanding when this came up last, that we were under the impression that these non-radio ones were basically unavailable, like this technology wasn't available anymore. So I'm just curious, what changed? And all of a sudden, now we can order them and have them?
I think the misconception, Alderman, is that analog meters are not available anymore. So the spinning disc, you know, the meat slicer on the side of the house, that's not available anymore. So this is a digital meter, it just doesn't have a radio in it. So those are still manufactured, but manufacturers do not make the analog meters anymore.
Was there just some miscommunication or misunderstanding at that previous meeting we had about what the request was or what was available on the market?
Yes, that was, there was a misunderstanding at that time.
Okay.
So once we did further research with our vendors, they said that they were able to make the meters without the radios in them.
Is it a demand for this more than one person or is it just the one?
To our knowledge, it is one person.
It's just the one person?
Yeah, that's correct. That gentleman is here this evening.
Okay.
Dustin, go ahead.
I was going to say, can we hear about more of the justification for this process first? For why it's being pursued?
Yeah, we will once we're done discussing it.
Okay.
Anybody else on this side?
There is a hold harmless because you have already pointed out the benefits of not doing this that is available. And so any resident who wants this, which is currently one, signs a hold harmless agreement where the city cannot be liable for anything that is detrimental as it relates to this particular, I mean, limited exception that we are carving out. Correct?
Attorney Drundle worked with the three of us on this agreement.
And I just wanted to point that out so that everybody knows that.
This is at your own, this is at your own peril and at your own, your own choice for whatever reason you may have.
It's going to take a month for you to find out that you've got an open pipe in the basement. You know, and that's what I think we all need to know about, one of the things about these, not being out of the system.
Yeah, you know, and speaking of that, I mean, so when you have exceptional tech in a system that is not supported by it, those situations tend to get very expensive occasionally, right? Whether it be there's an issue with it from a technical perspective, or more importantly, they're out of, they're out of your scope of view of what's really going on. So the ask here would be, these fees would have to be revisited repeatedly to make sure that, hey, you know what, we're actually covering the cost of what it is to support this exception, even from a trading perspective, right? And there's finding parts, there's a whole thing. I deal with this all the time when we have a client who's on something that's, you know, 15 years old, completely out of the park, and it costs so much to support that versus everything else, it's unbelievable. So this can't be fixed, it'd have to be revisited.
Correct.
And to follow up with that real quick, could you just quickly walk through what the workload monthly is going to be for city staff on that? I know last time we talked about this, we were talking about having to schedule time to physically get inside the home down under the basement to the water meter. Is that still the model we're envisioning? Are we going to be able to, I mean, we're not doing drive-by, so I guess are we still going to have to schedule?
We would still be driving by. We still go by to get the reading, but we would have to schedule that. And then there are provisions in here. If, for instance, a resident happened to be on vacation, they would just have to give us ample notice and we could reschedule that. If the meter happened to not be working, we can prorate it based on estimated use and then true up once it was able to be working. So.
Are we still talking about an employee physically going into the opening door?
Correct.
The door needs to be opened and they need to go down into the basement?
Correct. That's the model that we have right here.
And just to clarify, Alderman, that's the, the water meter needs to be, need the end of the premise to read the water meter. The electric meter can obviously be read outside, but yeah, someone still has to get out of the car and get into the backyard to read that meter.
I apologize for the silly questions here. Are we sending two, are we sending an electric apartment guy and then a water apartment guy? Are we sending one guy who's got both meters?
I think it depends on scheduling, but I believe we are intending to send one person.
Alice?
I have a question about the fees. Again, Jim, you bring up a good point with, you know, what we're thinking about whether we're going to have these fixed costs, but I'm curious for our resident now, is there an agreement that they're going to pay this monthly fee for a year and you're going to revisit the fees, or is it just monthly variable that it might change?
What would be variable?
The monthly fees that they have to pay.
Well, it would be, no, it would be a standard fee every month for us to come and read the meter. Obviously, their usage is variable, but that would be an add-on tacked on to each bill.
I'm not asking about the usage, I'm asking about the monthly fee that we're charging the resident for us to go out there.
It's the same.
So it's never going to change?
Unless we reevaluate that, and I believe in the language it allows me to modify the cost.
It's dictated by the ordinance.
Yeah. Just throw it out there. So in situations where I deal with this in my professional life, we usually do two things. Number one, we make the customer sign a waiver, which says, hey, you understand you're on this, you know, this exceptional tech that's no longer supported, or if it's still supported, you're out of the ordinary. So if we haven't done that, let's just go ahead and do that, just make them, so we're protecting ourselves. Because to your point, we're not going to know if they have an outage, right? Versus other people out there. So they're not going, they're going to get reduced service if they're on this tech versus the general tech, right? And the, and the second part of it is, you know, aside from the waiver, it's when they sell the house or when, which I would view as a renewal, it goes on the standard tech. So if this resident were to sell the house, it'd be great to have some language in there which says, okay, if you're going to sell the house, now we, now we have an opportunity to go put in the standard meters and what have you.
We've included both of those. The first was the hold harmless that.
There's a thing that they sign, it's actually in the packet.
Chris was talking about. And then the second, we have accounted for, there's a $100 fee that's retained at the beginning, that is to cover the cost of putting the old type, I'm sorry, the current type of meter into the home when it changes ownership.
No other questions?
No other questions? I know we have somebody in the audience that wants to talk to us about this. Come on up, sir. You can use the mic. All we need is your name for the record.
I'm Brian Sanchi, a resident of Ward 3. The, I wanna, I'd like to cite for you, and this was furnished to you, to your lawyer, these different charges that you have just been discussing. Iowa, no charges, period. No one-time setup fee, no monthly reading fee, no nothing. Indiana charges a $75 one-time changeout fee, $17.50 per month per meter thereafter. No cost for the asset, no non-refundable or no non-refundable $100 fee to change out the asset in case we sell our house. Naperville, one-time fee for the electric meter of $81, for the water meter $31.29, and then a monthly charge of $31.44 per meter. Comet in Northern Illinois, $60 one-time fee and then $23 per month for reading the electric meter. I mean, I could go on and on. Our lawyer furnished all these different rates from across the country to you. Oregon is $9 per month per meter, no setup fee, no one-time fee. So I just, I just would like for you to reconsider, you know, due to the American with Disabilities Act, have a little compassion on some of these rates that you're planning to set. You know, I'd be willing to work on getting readings of the water meter with your water department if you so desire. My wife is immunocompromised. She can't have people coming in the house monthly. So we could work out a way. I could text you the readings monthly. If you look at our payment record, we've never been delinquent in 30 years. We always pay on time. We don't want our services shut off because we're delinquent in payment. That's not the goal of this thing. This goal is to resolve a, is to help remedy a medical condition. I will tell you for myself, since that electric meter was installed, I haven't had a good blood work. And now I can't get cataract surgery because the ophthalmologist won't let me because the blood work isn't sufficient to get it done. So we shouldn't have to pay $100 to change out these things per device. And we shouldn't have to pay for the cost of the asset either. The gentleman that resided in the state of Maine who had lymphoma and he brought his case in front of a court against Maine Power, the judge, this is the judge's short statement. She says that Friedman, the lymphoma man alleges that without an analog meter, he cannot have the same full and equal enjoyment of Maine Power's services made available to persons who do not have his medical condition because if he uses a smart meter, he pays a standard rate but bears a unique risk to his health. However, if he uses an analog meter, he has the same physical experience and peace of mind as a person without his disability, but with an added fee. Under this view, it is plausible risk to Mr. Friedman's health, not a probable physical toll, that makes a fee waiver necessary to afford him equal access to Maine Power services. And that was the judge's ruling, quote unquote. So I saw your ordinance revision here. I got a copy of it. I think these charges need to be tweaked, be a little more favorable to the customer.
I think we normally just try to cover our costs on that. And, you know, you're asking us to change something that makes our system more usable, more user-friendly and cheaper for us to read. And, you know, we're taking a step back in technology. I understand why. And, you know, you've asked for that and we've given you the cost, what we think it's going to take to do that. You know, we had to spend time to find those meters and to be able to do that. And then we have to send somebody out to install them and then somebody to read them every month, physically read them. I don't know if we can put on the water, if we can put the meter reading outside the house. I know they used to be able to do that with just a small little readout on it, but I don't know if that's even available anymore. Jeremy, you want to speak to that?
As I was telling Mr. Sanchi, that I can put a radio outside. We still have that capability. But the old pulse remotes of yesteryear with the dial that spins sends a little pulse, the meter sends a little pulse, those are no longer available and they're, they're terribly inaccurate.
You know, a quick question while we drop here. So I was not here two months ago for when this first came up. So I just, just for a little background, has the meter already been replaced? No. Okay. So do we put a Faraday cage on the existing meter and verify that it's going to solve the medical issue by replacing this water meter? Because what I'm afraid, we're going to go through this, the issue's still going to be there. And then we're, you know what I mean? Have we done those sorts of tests?
Yeah. And I'm going to jump in real quick. I hear you, right? Like, we want to be problem solvers here. My concern, you know, one thing that I want to latch on to that Mr. Sanchi said here is it's peace of mind, right? I'm, I'm not going to, me as the Alderman here, I'm not going to be able to tell you if what you're saying is true or not, right? I don't know. I don't, I'm not going to be able to get in there and put a Faraday cage on it. I'm not going to be able to kind of verify your claims here. I'll be honest, I'm a little skeptical, but that's me and you're living in the home and this is your lived experience. I think the phrase you used was peace of mind and what you're looking for is peace of mind. First off, again, I'm really pleased that we have been able to walk down this path, what at one point seemed maybe impossible. Well, maybe now it's a little possible, right? We've kind of found a solution here. The challenge is we are looking at the cost and we do need to consider the cost to the city. You mentioned Iowa, Indiana, and Oregon. From my perspective, those entities seem like they're of scale that they can absorb a cost a little easier than, than the city of Batavia can. The one that seemed irrelevant to me was Naperville, right? You shared Naperville has an $81 installation fee, $31.44 per meter, meter read monthly fee. I don't know when the ordinance went into place. That doesn't feel too far off from where we're at. And as we know, prices have gone up significantly. So it feels like, and I don't know, it feels like we're not too far outside the ballpark in our $100, $100, $50. They're at $81, $31. And again, maybe years have passed. I don't know, right? So it does feel like we're kind of in parity in our, in our things.
I have the ordinance from Naperville pulled up and it was passed in September of 2020.
2020. So, you know, prices have changed a bit. And so from my perspective, as I'm hearing this, I think it's important that, you know, we take you seriously and I appreciate you sharing, sharing that. I'm afraid I'm not convinced on the fee though. Like, I do think we've found our, found kind of a nice proper spot for those fees that feel appropriate to both cover our end as well as provide an opportunity for folks in your position to find a path forward.
Well, Kevin, I'll tell you, I see Batavia trucks, white, black, gray ones in our neighborhood all the time. It's not like you guys aren't in the neighborhood. I mean, it should-
Those are all different utilities. They're all out there doing different things. Our white ones are wastewater, looking at our lift stations, which one is down the street from you. And we have other ones. So just because they're in the neighborhood, the yellow ones are street division. They don't have anything to do with this.
I understand, yeah. It's not like though, there's not a presence there where if he's in the neighborhood, he can get off the truck and do a quick electric meter reading, you know? And I, and I'm the first one. When we have a power outage, as far as liability, if we, if there's, if we have a power outage, I'm the first one to call the non-emergency police phone number. They know that we're going to be without power. So I wouldn't worry about the house, your liability.
I hear that for you and I do believe you and I trust you, but the second person who asked for this may not be the, you know, the upstanding guy you are, right? And so we kind of need to write a policy, at least from my perspective, a policy that is going to protect us from, you know, you're the good actor, there might be a bad actor, right? And so we do need to. I've taken enough time.
I want to, I want to also just kind of comment on a comment the resident made about access, that doesn't want to provide access. And I mean, the ordinance as drafted, paragraph five and paragraph six says there has to be, the resident hereby grants city personnel the right to access the property at reasonable times to read the water meter inside the residence and the electric meter outside the house. The resident, if unable, unavailable to provide access to the water meter as scheduled, has to notify the city to reschedule at least seven calendar days before the scheduled meter reading, or you're going to get a fine of $50. Paragraph six, if the resident fails to provide access regardless of the reason, you're going to get charged an estimated amount and provide notice to the resident of the lack of access. I want to point that out right now. There has to be access. I understand the comments about immunocompromised. That's what I believe here allows you to schedule it. And you can schedule a specific time whereby you take the reasonable steps that would be needed to isolate the immunocompromised individual or whatever the case may be because there has to be access. We just heard from our own city employee that there's no way to set it up where there's a reading outside. So again, this is an accommodation that's being made for a very limited request. A lot of work has been done to be able to do this. And I just wanted to point out that what we're voting on means there has to be access and the resident has to provide it. That's the way it is. And if that's not, and if the resident does not want to agree to that, then there's basically, it's, they're not going to have this option available.
Dustin? Okay. So a bit of my background here. I work as a radio frequency engineer. I've been working in the field for about 10 years now with receiving a master's degree before that. First off, I want to say I commend you for your concern for your wife and the health that she's undergoing to come out here and, you know, work on her behalf. I think it's a very wonderful thing. And I certainly don't doubt the symptoms you guys might be experiencing. Like, you have no reason to want to suggest that's not happening. I'm sure there's a lot going on. However, after doing some, doing my due diligence, I looked into the systems, worked with the city to get the data sheets for the systems we're using and kind of worked to understand them. At this time, I just do not find that this motion is justified, given the expense and sort of difficulties that will occur because of it. Looking at the systems, the power levels they're putting out are well below your standard cell phone, often at very similar frequencies. So from that perspective, the signal it's emitting is indistinguishable from general common communications. To put in, and it's not only that, but very low power and very sparse power. To kind of give an idea of what's happening is really all these sort of waves do to, you know, general matter at these frequencies is a very mild heating effect. A good example comparative I want to use here is a light bulb, which incidentally is also heating you via electromagnetic rays, only at infrared frequencies rather than RF. The power levels looked at here, I did some quick back of the napkin math here, is about equivalent to standing next to a standard 60-watt incandescent light bulb about, it's about a thirtieth of that power. And what's more is, to give an idea of that, like imagine standing about five feet from a light bulb and being warmed by that. This is going to be, the warming from this system would be about 30 times less. Or in other words, it's as though you're standing about five and a half times further away because power drop-off is a square of the distance away. Not only that, but this is a system that's only on for about, I think they said roughly a tenth of a second every five minutes. So imagine turning that light bulb on and then immediately turning it off. The amount of heat you're feeling from that is even further reduced. So I cannot see this be a justifiable thing. Even more so, even if we did get rid of the meter, there would still be radio exposure from a number of other sources, cell phones, microwave ovens, Wi-Fi routers, radio towers. To really, if this is a legitimate problem that's affecting you guys, to get rid of the radio emissions affecting you, you'd basically have to remove all of the electronic devices from your house, disconnect your house from the power grid because that can also bring in signals that have coupled to the transmission lines, and then basically wrap your house in chicken wire or some other like metal sheeting in order to act as a Faraday cage. That's just because they're all different terrestrial sources and even extraterrestrial sources in the sun, you know, has some broad spectrum emissions as well. Either that or move to the radio emissions free zone in West Virginia used to support the radio telescope there, which some people who have these concerns sometimes do. Not that I'm suggesting you do that. I only bring all this up because if this were a free action, if this was a matter of us flipping a switch somewhere and that was the end of it, I'd be fine for the peace of mind argument. I would understand that. But this is something that's going to take up staff time and we have a fairly overburdened staff. I mean, just yesterday, the past two days, they've been doing a ton of work on the utilities. Even though it is a small thing going out and checking one meter, that takes up time when we have staff who need to be working on a huge long list of other priorities right now, which is part of why the charge is there. But that's also just the thing is, I earnestly don't think that this will solve the issue and I don't feel good about having to use $100 of staff time and charge you for that every month in order to take care of it. I think, I don't know what the underlying issues you guys are experiencing are. I'm certainly not going to weigh in too much on it, but I, I'm quite certain it's not this. So I appreciate you though.
Her medical doctor will differ with, from you. She'll, she'll state that, yeah, it can exacerbate immunocompromised persons. You bet it can. And that, and that letter was sent and I personally carried it over to the Public Works Department in March of 2014, a copy of that letter from her doctor.
Right.
She'll definitely argue. And those, those meters, they pull out 190,000 pulses a day. I disagree with what you're saying. They, they put out that many-
I also will disagree with you on that, sir.
Well, then, then, I'm sorry, it does. Each meter will put out that many.
Sorry, it doesn't.
Right. Yeah. So it will, it will affect-
We're going to stop the discussion now because we're going to vote on this and it's your choice if you would like to do that. You see what the constraints are within the ordinance and what would be required of you to do that. And then it's your choice if you want to accept that.
I just, I just ask if you could look at those, look at those monthly reading fees and a one-time setup fee. That's what I want you to look at.
I don't know how our electric department or water department does anything cheaper than that.
And we already looked at, and the Naperville rates are five years old. Things have gone up. And I had one brief conversation with you where you said you would pay anything because this, that was that important to you. I don't think these fees are unreasonable at all. And they cover our staff cost or time.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yeah, I guess all I would say is I'll put it to us. I don't think we should change the fees. And I suppose if we wanted to change the fees, somebody should speak up. So I'm, you know, just, I would take the silence on changing the fees unless somebody makes such a move. That's unfortunately our answer to you. And I'll go ahead and own that and say, I don't think we should do that.
Yeah, I'll just say, very hard to follow Dustin. Great job. I know a little bit about RF and I have the same sentiment. So I, I just see this unfortunately as, yeah, I think it's, I will be a no vote. So.
And I agree with that. I think just eliminating that one possible power source is not going to, even if it was created, that you're not, there's cell phones, your neighbors have cell phones. You know, your neighbors have electric systems. It's, you know, it is, it's around. We cannot think that this is, one, one thing is going to, you know, eliminate all that for radio frequency. I just, I, I can't in good conscience agree to something that would, that's, would not solve a problem.
Fine. I'm, I'm- Well, I appreciate you going this far, but your, my, my, her, her medical doctor will disagree with you. So.
Alice, Leah?
I'll support this ordinance as written so that it does give the option to those who want peace of mind to have, to, to move forward with this. But yes, I will support it as written.
Dustin, the World Health Organization states smart meter radiation is a carcinogen. They've stated that in their websites.
Could you send that to me?
The World Health Organization-
Yeah.
-has stated that in their website that, that the smart meter radiation is a carcinogen.
Could you send that to me though? So I want to, so I make sure I'm getting the right source, the source that you're referring to.
I have conflicting WHO info right here.
I'll, I'll just go ahead and make the motion that we pass the ordinance as presented.
Motion by Malone, second by Lehman. Roll call, please.
Barazah?
Aye.
Lancy?
No.
Beck?
Aye.
Malay?
No.
Malone?
Aye.
Sulfah?
No.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Lowman?
Aye.
Peeper?
No.
Baron Beck?
No.
Anderson?
No.
Vocal singer? So that's one, two, three, four, five, six.
Seven yes, six no. So that will go on to council with a positive recommendation and one, one person not here.
Person not here.
So you may get to vote, your honor. Okay, that'll go on the next city council agenda. All right, thank you.
I just did a search of WHO and it says smart meters concluded that very small amount of RF energy is produced by smart meters and is not harmful to human health.
The beauty of the internet over Wi-Fi.
I beat Ferenback to that.
I think Tim had it pulled up first.
It's an official term.
All right, I will move us on then to item nine, which is ordinance 2025-34, amending portions title eight, one, A5, rates of the Batavia Municipal Code. Good evening.
Good evening. This ordinance also amends portions of the same section that the previous ordinance adjusted. Kind of bad timing for the two being together, that we couldn't have combined it for more cohesive amendments, but I've provided the changes to the ordinance that are recommended here. The first change is to remove the cap on the PPAF for our two industrial users that are over 30 million kilowatt hours. We're anticipating increased costs this summer. Many of you may have read in the paper about ComEd customers facing cost increases. We will be as well. We buy capacity at, excuse me, through PJM. And they are very high costs that we're going to have to pass on to our customers. We've done some initial calculations and we're estimating that for an average user of 700 kilowatt hours, that it would cost about $7 more a month. Of course, for our large industrial, it will be significantly more. So then the other two parts of the changes to this ordinance are for removing the detailed language for our market rate customers and economic incentives, so that we deal with each case individually. We have only one market rate customer right now. It's not something that we deal with often. It has to be a very large user. So, having all the detail in the ordinance just doesn't make sense, because each user may be different. And then the same with the economic development incentives. It just removes the detailed language, but allows us to engage in conversations and then bring an agreement to the council. The council would still approve any market rate customer or any economic development incentive. Any questions on what we're proposing?
I think this gives us more flexibility, especially trying to attract, you know, a large user. So I think it's good that we have that change in this.
Anybody else have any comments? You want to make a motion?
I guess I have one more question, because people are going to want to know when these rates are changed. So, is it affecting your person living on Main Street, your person living on Prairie Street, your regular homeowner, or is this only for the, the larger customers?
This is only for our two large customers that are over 30 million kilowatt hours, because they have a cap. When we originally wrote this ordinance back in 2015, we didn't anticipate that it would go above that cap. And they just wanted assurance at that time that it, it wouldn't, but we're projecting now that it will. All of our residential customers don't have that cap in the ordinance now.
And that's, I just wanted to point it out, because whenever anybody hears about anything being increased or caps being removed, they're worried about their individual selves and-
Right. And I thought we were going to have a larger discussion on this tonight, but we can add another cow, if you want to discuss it further. Rahat could, or Steve could explain the reasons for the capacity cost increase, but it's basically comes down to supply and demand. It has nothing to do with Prairie State Energy Campus. It all has to do with PJM, which is our RTO that we are included in. And they set the price for capacity and they felt they didn't have enough energy to provide, so they increased the cost for, for everyone in the 13 states that they operate in. And in fact, MISO, which is where Prairie State is, is quite worse, almost double or over double.
Right. The, the cost for PJM increased by, the capacity cost increased by 660% this year, but it was 2,000% in the MISO, RTO.
For those of us who, who may not know what PJM does, do they run the infrastructure for the wa, for the wiring and they?
They're basically your electric grid. They're the regional transmission operator.
Okay, so it's just transmission, okay.
Those different ones.
Okay.
Yes. And they serve most of the top, the north half of Illinois and MISO is in the southern half of Illinois.
And in fact, we will have a benefit by having our capacity in Prairie State, because we sell into the PJM market. So we, our NIMPA bills will be lower this year because of that.
Is there any indication that they gave on why there is, there is going to be more being used this summer compared to other?
Well, they said, one of the reasons they gave was increased data centers everywhere, not in any particular city, but just the overall demand that data centers are needing.
RTOs have far less reserve energy than they ever have in the past because of the increased demand. And so it's a seller's, it's a seller's market.
Electric gets me.
So when we say, so we say energy, we're really meaning capacity, correct?
That's correct.
Yes, it's the capacity portion of the bill that we are seeing it increase.
It's more expensive in the summer.
Right now, we're paying, I think it's 80,000 a month, and it's going to go to 605,000 a month. So it's a tremendous increase for us. But we are not alone. Everybody in, everybody across the country is seeing the same.
Without removing the caps, it could potentially impact all ratepayers.
Yes.
So I think that's-
That's correct.
-an important piece to see here, that if we don't address this at that end, we're all going to pay for it.
Exactly.
Right. So by removing the cap, everybody will see the same type of increase per kilowatt hour. And they do auction off their capacity. You're going to laugh, I worked for an energy trader for all 2019. So, so, yeah, I mean, there's, there's a lot of stuff involved here. You know, I tell, it'd be great to, you know, sit down with you and just kind of go through the whole thing. I know for a new older person that, that'd help me give you the background.
It might be a good thing just to have, you know, a presentation on that and allow everybody to ask all the questions that they would like to have answered. So we'll set that up.
And Rahat is really the, the expert on this, so he definitely would be the one that would be able to answer all the questions.
It'll be stump for hot night.
Aiming the gun at him. Well, we still have to collect it from the residents and so that's not fun either.
I make the motion that we send to council with positive, positive recommendation ordinance 2025-034, pending portions of title eight dash one, A dash five, rates of the Batavia Municipal Code.
Motion by Malay, second by Sulfah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion curious. Then we'll move on to item 10, discussion of the quarry crossing guard that was brought up at our last council meeting. Do we have an update or do you have an idea? I know you said you were not happy with the last contractor that was out there.
No. And then we had not been intending to hire a crossing guard for that intersection because of the implementation of the road diet. The areas where we found that the rectangular rapid flashing beacon crossings did not function well, were on our streets that had four lanes that pedestrians had to cross. And so now that there are only two lanes of traffic that pedestrians need to cross, the, the beacon, that's the perfect situation for it. And we really have not had problems at our other places in town that have the RRFB that are on just the two lane roads. Earlier today, I checked with the receptionist to see if we had had any phone calls from residents who wanted to know why aren't there crossing guards this year? And thus far, we have not received any phone calls about that.
Chris?
This is the whole point of the road diet. This is the entire point. I see no reason to sink in, I mean, what was it, like 15, 25 grand?
15,000.
Yeah. Waste of money. No need for it.
I think it's also good that we maybe figure a way to educate people how to use that, the beacon system on, on the, the road diet street, so that way they're aware of how to use it. I mean, I saw two kids go by, one of them reached over and slapped the button and they got onto the street before it ever even started flashing, because they're in such a hurry to get by there. I also know that, you know, last year, there was a lot of construction trucks out there for all of what we had going on in Water Street and in that area. So that, I think was a really good thing to have then. I think now it's incumbent, again, on the residents to use the systems we have out there to their benefit and use the road as it's designed to get across it.
You have, and then, raise my hand. You have, you have the safe, the safe spot in the middle now. I mean, it is, that's what the, it's, it's not just a narrow couple of feet, you have a nice large area.
Don't venture out there until the traffic stopped.
Correct.
Until you're protected and traffic stopped. Tony?
Yeah, I recall that the conversation was at the time, we need an immediate measure to be put in place until we get to a road diet. And I think we're at a road diet now, and that was the intention of getting the crossing guard until we could make it safer. I think we've made it safer.
I brought this up last time, so I just wanted to weigh in. Although the city hasn't received official comments, I have heard from several families that are concerned about it. 31, you know, is a major throwaway. And I recall that the city had removed the beacon on 31 that was north of that, right?
McKee.
Yes.
It was damaged.
And it was also considered not safe because cars weren't stopping, right? There was discussion about that. So, I guess, I don't know if I'm asking, but I'm, is it possible that we should remove the one that's on south, south of Wilson? Is that some, is that a possibility? Because I'm hearing that it's not safe to cross at that intersection.
The issue before was you had two lanes of traffic. And if you had one car stop, somebody got halfway across the road and the next car didn't stop, that's how people got clipped. I mean, that was the, the whole issue across a four lane road. With it being three, you're basically walk out into the center of the road, the car is stopped on the other side, then you have a safe way to get across the street. So again, I think it's education and use that, you know, will make that work in the condition it's in. And I believe the other thing was, is I don't think IDOT would let us put the other one back on a four lane road after it was damaged.
So the other issue is speed, right? I know that we can't control lowering the speed because that's a state-owned street, but cars are not going the speed that's indicated. There's a lot of distracted drivers also with cell phones. I see it all the time. I wish that our police would stop more distracted drivers. And it still comes down to safety. I feel like the city has the responsibility to ensure that our youth are safe when they're crossing busy streets. So I'd like, I don't know what we can do, but I'd like to, I would hope the council would support putting a crossing guard there, because the quarry does attract so much youth, in particular, youth that go without their parents and have cell phones and are distracted bicycle drivers as well, and are not using the beacon, like I think it was Malay, that said that they're not using it correctly. So yes, education is one piece, but I think I, I would like to see the city do more to ensure the safety of our youth.
One of the things, ways that we can address, if people have specific areas where they are seeing speeding activity, the city deploys methods of collecting speed data and can then do targeted enforcement in those areas. And we've, we've done that stepped up enforcement in the past and, you know, it's kind of an ebb and a flow, but it's one of the ways that we can address the speeding issue.
You know, as somebody who, I've lived on 31, or close to 31, a couple, a couple houses off 31 for about eight years, okay? And actually near where we're talking about, right? And so the, so I'm going to say this, and if I say it, you're going to go, oh yeah, you're going to notice it. On 31, the issue is, so number one, you're right, the cars do go too fast, right? Including my wife was in a very serious car accident, kind of coming out of 31, right? Due to that, to a high speed driver. But the problem is, it's the vertical up and down. So what happens is that you can't, these drivers, they don't see the kid until, until they're almost on top of them, is, is a reality of it. And it going, the flips go, go, going either way, right? And if you, if you get on 31, like right at Fabians or driving down, you'll notice it. Like you can't see all the way down that street. It is not a, when we talk about it here, it sounds like it's a level street. It's not, right? So, so that being said, really, it's a stoplight or, that's all I think it's really going to like, solve that for good for everybody. Or we do a crossing guard every, every summer, but even then, you're just replacing the driver not seeing a kid for the driver not seeing a crossing guard, is what it boils down to. And that's just my, based on my experience of, of, of living there, so.
Can I continue?
No, I want you to let other people talk, I'll be back to you in a minute. Abby?
I will also support the crossing guard. I would love a couple of things. So, an update on the study being done of Route 31 as part of the road diet implementation. We were then studying all of those intersections for other interventions to make them safer, as well as the downtown portion being added to the down, being added to the road diet design. I agree that that implementation has made, has gone a long way. And I would love to see this council continue to move. When we're, when we're addressing road safety issues, they always talk about the three Es, enforcement, education, and engineering. Enforcement and education are maybe 5, 10% of the puzzle, and engineering is the only thing that works. So, engineering the road to be safer with a road diet, great first step. We have talked about replacing the beacons with the HAWK system. And that is a red light that stops cars and then lets them go when the pedestrians have passed. And just to recap, the, the one on McKee Street, the beacon was taken down. We were not allowed to put it back up because there was a patent issue with the technology, not because of any safety concerns. We did not put it back. The discussion was then moved forward to do the road diet. In that same discussion, we said, okay, we won't put the beacon back up, we'll move forward the road diet instead. I would also like to see a crosswalk put back there, we cross there anyway. Sorry, sorry chief, wherever you are. And so, I, I want to see us address these intersections. I mean, we have made vast improvements. I still don't let my kids cross alone. I would, if there was a crossing guard there, I would let them go downtown through that, through that intersection. But I, I think we need to, we need to start looking at the engineering and start minimizing the education and the enforcement, because those simply are not effective ways to make the road safer.
So similar to the, it's going to be the same process as the other phase and the, it's being engineered right now. And so then the, the firm will come and do a presentation of what is planned at each intersection. And then there will be also opportunity for a public meeting where the public can come and comment on all of that. That is the typical IDOT process for projects and all of those same steps will be followed as they were in phase one.
Do we know a timeline for when this is going to happen?
At this time, the consultant is working with IDOT to see what they are going to allow at each intersection. They are also working through the main and Wilson intersection too. There are a couple of ideas of roundabout and all that being looked at. That's why the whole thing has been delayed. Delayed in a sense, it's been worked on. So I would think that it will take another three months before we can bring something to you for each intersections. But if, I mean, it's a typical IDOT process, going to take a couple of years before it gets flushed through the whole thing and goes into construction. So, if you want to wait another two years to make the improvements, that's totally up to your discretion, but crossing guard and all that discussion probably should be separate than that, so.
So to kind of go along the idea of the education program, I think that that would be great to have a-
be great, to have a video on how to use that system. The one thing that I've taken by looking at the videos that are currently posted, unfortunately, people aren't just bad drivers along thirty-one. It sounds like they're bad drivers throughout the entire area and also in parking lots. So where we want to try and, you know, protect our kids, it's, it's everywhere in the community. It comes down to the drivers and the enforcement and the way that the roads are designed. But I really do think that maybe doing something where we show how to use it, how it works, I don't know if there's some sort of signage to kind of remind the people. I'm sure we can't do striping. The state will be like, no, you can't put a crosswalk there or anything. But I think those are some things that, you know, we, that we should really move forward with. They're effective. And to give kudos to Lori for the videos, because I enjoy when they come out in the afternoon and look for it, and I smile at those kids hearing their stories.
Yes.
Today was Starbucks where the people almost got hit.
Mm-hmm.
Because people aren't paying attention.
And I just wanted to reiterate that I think of a crossing guard as engineering, and I think that's a good option for the summers.
I guess I'm a little confused. Does the council want our youth to be safe for the summer until we're able to make more engineering?
I think that's a fair question to ask us.
Totally loaded question.
Okay. Yeah. That's not fair to say.
I guess. I can answer right now. I want the kids. To be safe, and that's what the road diet is for and has been effective so far, with no complaints.
There are a lot of families that are afraid to cross thirty-one because they still don't feel it's safe.
There's a stoplight right up the road at Main Street if they want to go.
That's true. They also don't feel that they're safe.
No one walking their biking is going to go.
Crossing guard is going to make them safe.
The less safe at Wilson and thirty-one than I do down at Union Street.
Tim?
I thought the, the problem was the crossing guards weren't doing their job, right? They were sitting in their car, they were not doing anything. Is there, have we explored? Yeah. Have we explored other companies or have we complained to that company and they said, hey, we'll give you a cut rate? Or trying to find in the middle here that we don't have to spend fifteen grand for somebody to sit in their car?
Not for somebody to sit in their car, but it, it definitely does cost fifteen grand for, and perhaps more this year. They addressed issues when we brought them up to them. And then you'd get more complaints.
The price is still the price.
Two weeks later, and they'd address the, you know what I mean? It was a little bit of whack-a-mole.
Yeah. People are people. No, I get it. No, I really, yeah, I want to find some kind of medium here because, but that's just a ridiculous amount of money for somebody, you know, if we have two people across the street, you know, it's a tough one for me. I don't know, I don't know if I can go with that, so.
Yeah?
Do we have any data from the last two summers of the crossing guard? Like, how many people were crossing? They didn't keep numbers or anything?
No.
Because that would have been really nice to have.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd sort of just be interested in hearing, and this might have to wait for another time, are there middle steps? You know, I know that in certain instances, if you put cones upstream from where the cars are, the cars naturally slow down. That can be sort of a, maybe we could do sort of like removable balliards or something. I don't know, I'm brainstorming here, right? But things that aren't quite fifteen thousand dollars, but are maybe temporary and might induce folks to slow down as they approach that, that area. Even if we have a spare police car, we can park with one of those dummies inside? I don't know, but like.
We do that from time to time.
Yeah. I mean, I think there might be some middle grounds that can get us where we need to be, or at least maybe make folks slow down a little bit while also recognizing that maybe the crossing guard themselves wasn't the perfect solution. I don't know, I'd love to kind of get brainstorming.
Anything in the road will probably get done next summer because it will require IDOT approval.
Yeah. If I can hold one second. That's the reality we deal with.
So, the middle ground, I mean, as a former crossing guard, maybe it's just we put a volunteer sheet up at like the quarry pool, you know, because.
Liability is too huge.
Uh-huh.
If, if someone makes a mistake crossing with someone's child and there's a tragic injury, the city could be on the hook for millions of dollars of.
That's why you hire a company to do it.
I have another suggestion, money-wise?
That's the reality.
It's the reason the Park District is not participating in providing the crossing guard.
That's what I was just going to say. So this is a Park District property, this is a Park District attracting the children. If the Park District cares about the safety of the children, they can spend the money on the crossing guard. Because the city has spent a lot of money and a lot of time and effort making it a road diet there. So this is a temporary situation where the Park District is attracting children. And if this is, this could be a situation that maybe if there's concerned residents, they certainly, there are Park District board meetings where they can go address the Park District and ask the Park District to hire a crossing guard for the sole purpose of letting children get across to get down to their facility.
Else? I mean, I just think, one of the things I started to think about on this was, we have two bike paths on each side of the river that cross multiple different, very busy streets. And we don't worry too much about those because there are controlled crossings. I think now that this is in a road diet section of the, of Batavia Avenue, and it's controlled and it has a device specifically made to make crossings easier, you know, when people learn to use it, then it's fine. I do a lot of travel out west, and I go out up this road, and there's one in a forty-five mile an hour zone just before forty-seven. And people, especially on bikes, seem to think they can touch the button and ride across the road and not wait for somebody coming forty-five miles an hour, Adam with a boat behind him on a truck. And I've seen way too many close calls out there. On this section, I know it's listed as thirty, it's probably forty is an average out there. People just have to learn to drive the roads. I mean, we can't legislate against somebody's will and want and, you know, abuse of the road. And we have to make sure that people know how to use the devices we've provided for them to get safely across the road. And I know we can make it safer, I know we can change stuff. I think it's all got to be in steps and it's all got to be thoroughly taught and learned by the people that are out there, both the drivers and the pedestrians.
Leah?
Just going to mention, the reason we're continuing to have this conversation is because of still how recent the devastations that happened on that road a couple of years ago. And those need to stay fresh in our minds. And so when we have these conversations, we need to be recalling what happened. And these, I think this is very healthy to have, and these conversations, because we are, as a city, it is our job to protect our residents. Can we put signage at the crosswalks for the pedestrians? Something like enlarged lettering, you know, wait till all cars have stopped before crossing? Just a reminder, especially to our youth, you know, about how to use the, the crosswalks?
I think maybe there was something on the, the RRFB up on McKee. So I'll, I'll look into that signage and what was up there. I think it said something to the fact of, don't like, don't walk until the cars have stopped, kind of message.
Something like that, yeah.
I believe we implemented something at McKee before McKee was taken down. So we can look into that and see whether we can install those signs as soon as next week.
Yeah, both at Union, but also at Morton, because there's also a crosswalk there. And then maybe even down at Millview.
Yeah. We, we can implement that.
Okay. We could also look at, like, we have down here on the sidewalk, the big circles that say dismount your bike. We can look and see if there's options there to be placed on the sidewalk square.
And maybe we need to have a discussion with the Park District, that, you know, they try to inform their patrons that they do need to utilize that when crossing the road, and they do need to take, you know, an extreme caution on state highway when they cross that. You know, just to get that communication out there as well.
Abby?
Just a note about the impact of the education as well. So the, one of the videos I just pulled up was viewed two-point-eight-thousand times, which is great, but we have over twenty thousand people that daily drive down that road. They probably are not all citizens of Batavia, they are probably not all following the City of Batavia Facebook page. So our, our efforts in education are going to be very limited in their current model.
And children are not seeing those videos on Facebook. Now, if we made a YouTube.
It's not on Facebook, yes.
TikTok, yeah.
They might, because they might, their friends might be on YouTube.
Yeah, from their parents, but.
Yes, they're on our YouTube channel.
Okay, great.
I think most of the people, sorry, most of the people that drives down Route, Route thirty-one, I would guess that seventy to eighty percent are like the daily people, they, they go up and down. One of the suggestions that I can make is maybe beginning of the summer or Memorial Day weekend or so, we can put like changeable message board saying pedestrian crossing ahead, so leave it there for like seven days or so, so that people are, get used to seeing that, and then we take it away. We cannot leave it out there for like three months, but maybe at the beginning of the summer, we can do that.
John?
I do have a ask, because obviously this will probably be a continued discussion. And, you know, Abby talks about the three Es, it's actually up to ten Es depending on what you do. One thing I'd like to maybe suggest is maybe next year in March, have this discussion and see if this is something that we want to do. And then also kind of coordinate that with maybe an earlier traffic safety program that could be implemented at some of the schools. You know, just to kind of get ahead of this as heading into the summer.
When you say a traffic safety program at schools, what, what does that look like?
Just maybe along the lines of bike safety, saying, you know, the Bike Safety Week, bike, bike and walk to work, or bike, bike to school, I think it's in, what, April? I don't know, I don't have kids anymore.
So we, our Bike Commission used to conduct a program for the schools, and now the schools has, the school has taken that over. And they are the ones providing that.
Just having some sort of safety program that coordinates with the schools' programs to get that word out to the kids as they're heading into the summertime, I think is important. So I think if we're ahead of this, as opposed to being in the middle of June and having this discussion, then we can have the discussion early on of, do we want to consider having a crossing guard, you know, continuously evaluating? We can't just say, we've got a program in and we're just going to leave it there. We need to be continuously evaluating the programs, especially when it comes to safety and moving around within our community.
John?
And I understand we're going to ramp up. Next time this comes, hits the agenda, and again, I lived on the street for eight years, right? I'm telling you point-blank, to Abby's point, we need to engineer these cars to stop, right? Because what happens is, and I saw this for years, there's not a stoplight from Mooseheart all the way until you hit, I think it was Main, right? So these cars just go on, they, they kick up speed, the road is going up and down like this. So when they hit these cross, these crossings we're talking about, they have like this far to stop because they don't see those pedestrians until they're like, you know, almost on top of them. So ultimately, needs to be a stoplight, a Hawk system, like whatever, whatever it is. So everything we're talking about is a temporary supporting measure, but we do have to stop them. So it'd be great, next time we talk about this, let's, let's bring that up front and get some timeline together and all that stuff, and go from there.
I'd more.
I'd kind of, I agree with kind of what I've heard here. I think getting ahead of this is great. I also, we have an active transportation commission. I'd love to hear their suggestions, I'd love to kind of ask them directly, tell me how to make this safer. And I think that we have some great expertise on that commission, and I think that they would have some great insights as well. So I think if we're explicit and say, please help us, help them, I think that would be a good use of, of their time and.
That's one of the reasons we split that road diet project into two pieces, so that we could get just the, the road diet part done and then figure out what we're going to do with the interior section downtown here. And like from Union to McKee Street in that, in that purview of the, the second go-around and the second phase, so. Andrea?
Max and I were at the meeting last night for the active transportation. There's somebody in the audience that was there as well, and we were looking at the bike application, or the application for the bike-friendly community. And as going through there, there were items to hit, and some of them were policies and such that we may not have in place, but we do anyhow. So we had advised them to kind of take a look at that application as they finish it up and bring us a list of items. And maybe we could also add something like this to that and prioritize, because they did understand that staff time is limited. So they were going to take initiative on some of these items.
Okay.
That's good. I think it's always good when we can get them involved.
Absolutely.
Abby?
Are we going to do any sort of a vote on the crossing guard?
What, he makes a motion?
I would move that we approve a crossing guard for the 2025 summer.
Second.
A motion and a second, and we would need a roll call for this.
Barazza?
Yes.
Nancy?
Hi.
No.
Beck?
Aye.
Malay?
No.
Malone?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Nope.
Wolf?
No.
Baron?
No.
Lehman?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Tharandback?
Aye.
Anderson?
No.
Vocal singer? Okay, so that's seven six.
Going to counsel with a positive recommendation?
All right.
I have a comment on that.
Sure.
Is there any, is there even any money in the, we don't have any money set aside in the budget for that.
We have to figure out how to fund it, so I guess.
We do, we did put money in the budget, twenty-five thousand dollars through raised liquor license fees. That is for transportation safety programs. Idea was to use it for education campaigns and those sorts of things, but there is that twenty-five thousand that is for transportation safety programs.
What the vote comes out and then we'll figure out how to pay for it if it passes.
Okay.
All right, and we'll move on to item eleven, which is discussion on the Carrie Sebold complaint, last council meeting. You want to respond, Laura? I know you sent a memo out.
Yes, so, you know, I, we provided you the information, the point-by-point response to the things that Ms. Sebold had presented. We also presented you with a timeline with all of the contacts that had been made between the Sebolds and the professionals that they were working on for this project and any members of staff, so that you had all of that. And in my memo, I just, you know, I expressed that as a team, we want to see businesses come to Batavia and succeed. It is not in our best interest if through our interactions with those folks that we somehow send them away to other communities. But at the same time, we have challenges with the building stock in our downtown, that these are some really old buildings that were built when codes were far less strict than they are today. And in terms of incentivizing the current owners to correct those issues, it's sometimes difficult because, you know, things like taking down a chimney, for instance, probably a hundred and fifty thousand dollar proposition, probably not money that anybody has sitting around in their, their bank account to do. We don't have any information that the chimney as it is, is unsound. In fact, a few years back, the property owner hired someone to do an inspection of that chimney. There was recommended tuck pointing and brick replacements that was recommended, and that work was done at that time. So we don't have any information that that is in a unsafe condition. But it's challenging when someone has a budget for a project, they see a really great-looking downtown like we have here, and they fall in love with a property, only to find out that there are hidden issues that would need to be addressed for significant amount of additional investment. You know, at times, the city is able to provide money to, to bridge the gap, but we also have to be good fiduciaries of the public funds that we're using to do that. And it would make sense that, you know, there has to be an, an upside for the public benefit in order to justify the level of investment that is being requested. And, you know, this, we can have further discussions about, you know, what the policy looks like for that, but a return on the city's investment within a ten-year period of time seems very reasonable. We didn't have the opportunity to bring that proposal to you because, you know, to my understanding, there isn't a property in which that business owner. there isn't a property in which that business owner has an interest right now, even at like a letter of intent standpoint. So we're very sorry that in this circumstance, that things didn't work out, you know, and there were misunderstandings in the process as well. And I'm sorry that things that we did made them angry and want to take their business elsewhere. So, but I'd be happy to answer any questions about the information that I provided to you.
Robin? Pull, pull your mic down. It's not.
This is more of a general question, and I think Jim kind of maybe alluded to this too. Moving forward, if, I mean, that's a really prominent spot and really targeted for development. If we know that it's so, how do we see this moving forward when we know that it's such a challenge, these are challenged spaces and we know that we can only go so far with private property and with, you know, any particular property owner? What kind of, what kind of business would be interested in investing that kind of money in that quality of building stock?
You know, we see it happen all the time. Not all the time. Let me give you a few examples. Comedy Vault is a great example, a bank building that sat vacant for how long there? Was the bank building vacant? A decade, right? And now it's one of the busiest businesses in all of our downtown. One could say the same of the building that became Gaetanos. That would be another great investment of, or great example of someone buying a building and doing the, a lot of additional work because, you know, having a vision that it was eventually going to be worth it to do that. The area, the building where the goat is located, the, the condition of that building when they took hold of that was just, you couldn't even, it's night and day to what it is today. So it does happen.
Everdine's?
Everdine's, perfect. That's another one.
Yeah, that was a money pit that they didn't realize when they bought it, when they got into it, you know, and that took a long time for that to materialize, to get every issue fixed. Oh, we've got lots of hands up over here. Start out with Jen.
I just, because properties that were being looked at, I mean, these were more than just, these were like, these are environmental issues that go even further down, right?
And that is present throughout, throughout downtown because of the prior industrial uses of most of the buildings.
Even look at our Prairie Street project, we had to pull three tanks out of the ground out there.
Yeah, I mean, the way that I'm looking at the reason why some of these have been successful, it's been a complete tear down and because of the projects being put on top of them, they've been able to absorb some of the costs associated with having to do that. I mean, the ones that you've mentioned, those have been great, you know, that have been done, but they haven't had these tanks that have been associated with that. And, you know, we have to decide as a council, do we bear that responsibility for those private properties to put that money in to remove those or upgrade that property? Or is that where we just need to say, we need to find a really big project that fits within our downtown master plan that can absorb these costs in with that? We know based on some of the conversations we've had, sometimes with some of these costs, it has to be a bigger project.
You know, I think part of this is on, on city council because I think we're relying too much on staff for prioritizing stuff, quite frankly. You know, we just took $5 million of our TIF and put it on a ramp, right? If we knew these, we had these, these properties that are in deep vacancy, right? And what happens with these properties that are aged like this, that have these conditions, because we're an old industrial town, right? They become storage, right? I've seen this repeatedly. I used to live near the old Blaine Street School. The original owner, who was one of the major developers here, he tried to get a catering business on the bottom and him and his wife were going to live up top, they were going to invest a ton of money in the property. We poo-pooed it, you know, the residents poo-pooed it. We let them poo-poo it, right? And I'm going back like, you know, whatever, 20 years. And so it sat as a storage for, for 16 years, right? Olmstead's, Olmstead is 50 feet on, on Wilson. If you look in there right, right now, it looks like somebody's garage, right? And it's going to stay vacant, right? The, where, the one of the properties that, that Sebold looked at, the one near the Depot Museum, right? That is, is in deep vacancy as well. That's currently at a prime location, right? So what we're doing is we're creating a storage properties in our downtown because we're not prioritizing flipping them to taxable properties that bring in good businesses, right? It's always, we could always find an exceptional story where some, somebody, because they loved Batavia, because they wanted to do it. Sturdy Shelter, I spoke with the former owner, Kluber, and he told me point blank, hey, I just love the building. I, I, I was willing to invest and not make a dime on it, right? I mean, I mean, those, you're looking for love to, to flip some of these properties and the fact is, we need to prioritize making these viable properties, right? And staff needs us to help prioritize it instead of putting it all on them, right? Because what they're going to do, they're going to say, hey, this TIF is ending, we have funding we need to spend, here's something that they're aware we can spend it on, right? Because we're not providing that input. Also, we're always forgetting, a lot of staff doesn't live here. A lot of folks don't live in the community, right? I heard about what she was going through like three months ago, before I ever, you know, before I even started. I know other people around here probably heard bits and pieces of it, right? It never hit this table, right? Because, because we're allowing staff, or, you know, or we're so used to letting staff help guide us on some of these issues that we're not understanding, hey, if this, if we have created a situation where somebody who is this smart, who is this invested in Batavia, who is such an Batavia cheerleader, if she can't make a business work here, we have a real problem, right? And, and maybe some of the properties, maybe we're at the end of our rope with those properties that are easily flippable to usable space. So now we're at the bottom third or the bottom fourth where we're going to have to get, get creative and, you know, roll up our sleeves to flip those to fossil properties.
But we don't own them. That's the challenge.
I'll tell you right now, there's two words to your, to answer your, what you're talking about, current ownership. That always thinks that the building is worth twice what it's worth.
We fine, we fine, we fine.
Well, and, and that's the thing I think we, we can go with is, you know, do we bear some responsibility because we let the building get into that shape? Yeah. And I'm sure we bear some responsibility because two buildings are tied together on the same electric service and all the other nightmares that are there. Do we, do we bear the, the problem that there is environmental issues on an adjacent property to one of them to look at and environmental issues on the property of one they, that's all on ownership. You know, when you own a building or you own a property that has any kind of fuel storage, any kind of in-ground tanks, you have a nightmare to deal with in Illinois because there's about four or five different levels they can go. If they open that tank up and nothing's in it, you can fill it with concrete and leave it there. If they open it up and there's anything in it, it's coming out and it has to be inspected and whatever is happening around it stops and it can get extremely expensive to get rid of.
So what we did when we purchased the Webster Street property was we had an environmental analysis done and the environmental analysis said probably needs up to $200,000 worth of environmental remediation. We went to the seller of that property and asked them to put $200,000 in escrow in order for us to utilize that money to clean up that property. If the city were to fund the cleanup on all of the private properties in downtown, that's just, you know, funding the sale value of the property for the seller.
Kevin? Yeah, so I, I don't want to lose this thread that Jim threw out there. I think this is an important one. Yes, we can talk about who's technically responsible and we can get into it, it's your fault, our fault, their fault. I actually don't care whose fault it is. I care what we can do to fix it. And that might mean the city has to do things that aren't technically our responsibility but are for the betterment of the community. So on that front, yeah, maybe the leaky tanks in the next door property aren't our responsibility, but we can help, right? We also don't need to frame this in an either or way. It's not either we fix it or they fix it. We can get creative. There are a lot of cool tools out there we can use to help finance. We can do zero interest loans, we can do low interest, we can do subsidies, we can do all sorts of cool things that we need to kind of get serious about so that our prime properties that are downtown aren't being left to rot. You know, I think that the fear that a lot of the council that I heard here is that we are letting these wonderful, beautiful buildings, the Aqua Viva building, it's rotting away, but it's kind of a neat spot, right? Like it's a cool building and if we could find a way to make that marketable and get it out there, that'd be awesome. I'd love it and I'd be willing to spend a little bit of money that we don't technically have to spend to do it. So first, I just don't want that point to be, be kind of lost. I have kind of a bigger question here. You know, I think we have kind of a, a good policy question about what we do with properties. Reading through it, it sounds like accessibility to the environmental reports. I, I kind of got lost in there. I don't know whose responsibility or fault or what the hiccup was, but what I did learn is that it's hard to get. So I think we can work a little harder to make it a little easier to get. We can market these maybe a little.
We don't know about it, Kevin. We just don't know about it.
Well, and so let me turn this back around then, right? Reading through all this and having experienced this, and I'm, I'm going to be kind of direct here, do we think we did anything wrong? Because I read through the memo and it doesn't feel like that's the impression I got, but I kind of want to hear if you think we did wrong, what did we do wrong? And what are we going to do to make sure that we don't fall into that again?
I think that the communication surrounding the environmental issues, what the Sebolds had presented as the city's position, we, especially what we did wrong was that I knew about 24 North Batavia Avenue. I still don't know anything about actual contamination on the 35 North Water Street property. The wells that were put in, were put into the roadway surrounding that building and it was due to the contamination that existed on 24 North. Environmental issues happened between property owners and the state EPA. Unless they're pulling a building permit like, like putting those wells into the roadway, the city of Batavia would never hear about it. The reason why I know about 24 North was because they needed something from the city of Batavia in order to get their no further remediation letter. So there may be environmental cleanups that are happening in the industrial park on, we would just never know that.
And for the, the particular properties downtown, we, we could go to Illinois EPA and we can FOIA and we can ask, hey, give us all your remediation records based upon, and if we're serious about flipping some of these key properties, we don't have to do it for the whole city, but we definitely know we want River Street, we definitely know we want, you know, the Aqua Viva, whatever. Like we, we can begin to do some of that hard work and I know that costs time, money and effort, but I, I do think we can be more proactive. And I guess I just kind of want to circle back real quick. What, what do we, where do we think we made the misstep and what can we do in the future so that future Sebolds or whoever aren't finding themselves in this? Maybe, maybe we can't fix everything, but, but I kind of just want to hear, what, what did we do wrong and what can we fix, right? What are we looking at? What systems are we going to be changing so that we don't find ourselves here again?
Maybe we can try to leave no stone unturned with regard to the property that they have identified to get quickly to the point where it is, you know, if this doesn't happen, we can't do this. And we say, okay, well, let's bring that to our city council and see if that's something that they're willing to do. You know, and in this case, we had to move from, you know, between three different properties and we never, ever even got to the property that was under a contract.
And I, I would hope that there'd be a way that we can use our GIS systems and our various data systems so that we can turn, pre-turn those stones, right? I know other, South Bend, for example, has a great database where you can go in and they know where the properties are and you can look up all the data if you're interested. If we can have those stones unturned, you know, to push the metaphor a little bit beforehand, I, I, I hear you and I'm, I'm not dismissing that this is a Herculean task and that we're not going to be perfect. And so I do think we want to turn around and say that staff did do some things right, but we also need to recognize where we misstepped or even if we didn't misstep, what we can do better. So I think if we can find a way to pre-turn those stones, make as much of that information available, even if it's not our responsibility, it's still our interest. And I think if we can hit that interest, we can help cut some of this off before we get here.
First off, I believe that I carefully read through the responsive memo. I believe it was very articulate, very well thought out and addressed every single point that needed to be addressed and explained everything in much greater detail than what was done kind of, you know, without any warning at the last meeting in terms of the accusations and timeline. I believe everything was then addressed and laid out very well in terms of the responsive memo. That's number one. Number two, I think private property, we don't own these buildings. These are private properties. It's not our, I, it's not the, I mean, you want to go, you can go and ask every single citizen in the city and see how many, what percentage wise says we should, that they want to spend money on somebody else's building to remediate their building so that they can make a profit on it to sell it. That's the next thing, okay? It's not going to happen. People complain about a 10 cent bag fee. They're not going to want to pour money into somebody else's building so that they can then have it remediated so they can then sell it for a greater rate or rent it out for a greater amount. That's the next point. Another point, I believe that in terms of stones unturned, it's also not the city's job to make sure that people who are interested in generating a business, formulating a business, finding a location, it's not our job to babysit that. I think that unfortunately, in this particular situation, the potential investors in terms of creating a property, the Sebolds in this case, may have put the cart before the horse on several of these properties and put money in before they had done their own due diligence. We can't, it's just like we were talking about, about forcing people, you know, about safety crossing the street. We can't force people to do their own diligent, own due diligence before they're putting their own money into something and then going from building to building to building on buildings that are, when there's plenty of other properties in the city that do not have potential issues such as this, it might be smaller, they might not be on River Street, but there's many properties in this town that you could have gone to that would not have had this issue. And I just feel like the city is being blamed for a lot of stuff here that I don't think it was their fault. And I do think maybe there's, there could have been some communication issues, which I believe was also addressed in the memo in terms of the response, in terms of what can be done better, Alderman Malone. So I do believe that that was addressed and I just want to reemphasize, private property and why are we helping out a private property owner to have them make money?
Yeah, so on that note, I don't think, so first off, the, the intention of what I said earlier is not to help the current owner, right? The intention is to flip these properties to be, to become something useful, right? So, so two things. So first off, a lot of properties we're talking about, they're in deep vacancy. So if they think their property is worth whatever, like, you know, guess what, it's not, you know, so it's just based on your, on your, on their vacancy rate, okay? And secondly, a lot of these properties, not only are they in deep vacancy, they have environmental issues, right? So if we publicize environmental issue, you know, that they're not resolving, combined with their, that they're in deep vacancy, I guarantee you that price is coming way down, right? Because, because quite frankly, identifies that Sebold identified, she did one thing and there were many things, no one else is going to those properties now, okay? So, 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 because all, because this is public now, right? So we have a lot of information that people are discovering on their own, which is critical and reflects on the value of these. And we have bought private property in the past, several times, many times, more than tens of times, right? Some we do all the time, right? So, so, so the question here is that let's use leverage we have, properties in deep vacancy with environmental issues and use that to acquire these properties, you know, to, to bring those prices down and then flip them to something profitable. So the intention is not to, to fix it, an issue for somebody and then they, they go ahead, they, they go ahead and they sell a property. My environmental thing is fixed, now I can sell it for $2 million, right? That's not the intention. There is a great example of that. Oak Park did it. Oak Park had this beautiful hot dog stand called Fluky's. It was around forever, it was on Oak Park Avenue, or not Oak Park Avenue, whatever that street was. And, you know, and the whole community was like, we can't let Fluky's go, we can't let Fluky's go, right? So, so the city of Oak Park said, guess what? We're going to raise your, your original location, but we're going to build you a new one, right? This is a case where Oak Park went nuts, right? You know, we're going to save it Oak Park, we're going to save Oak Park. And what happened was, once the owner got his new shop, he sold it, you know, and he sold it for a ton of money, right? So, so the intention is not to make other people rich. The intention is to, to get these properties into responsible ownership where they respect the city and they're going to make it usable for people. So when a Sebold rolls in again, she has a place to go to, right? So that's it.
Abby?
I've got a list of notes, so these are going to come out in no particular order, but they respond to lots of things, so I apologize for jumping around. I just want to say from the get-go that from kind of like a, I don't know, philosophical point or my approach to downtown development is. point, or my approach to downtown development, is that I want to see small-scale developers succeed here. I don't want it to take a mega developer to come in here and fix our town and succeed here. So making it easy for the, for the small-scale developers to get a project through, to fruition is a big priority, whatever we have to do to get that. I think the grants and the no-interest loans and all of those things that we can offer should be a big discussion we have. We have signage grants, we have facade grants, we are already investing public dollars in making our downtown look better. And we don't do that because we want them to profit off of public dollars. We profit off of their success, their tax dollars, their property tax dollars will increase, the sales tax that could be generated. We talk about downtown as being the heart of our community in kind of a romantic way, but we, downtown subsidizes the rest of this town. Olmstead's, I've looked at the property tax records, Olmstead's pays a lot more per square foot than Kohl's. We are, this is our profit center, so we need to do everything in our power to get everything occupied, get everything generating, and, and increase property values so that we're increasing our property tax, so that we can provide good community services. We will get a tremendous ROI if we could work out grant or loan programs. We will see that money back manyfold. I agree that we should be stricter on the enforcement spectrum, wherever we kind of land on the business-friendly, I do think has worked against us. So I think we should be a little bit stricter on our enforcement standards. I want to agree with what Jim had put in his email to us about some metrics worked into our strategic plan soon, very soon, for economic development. What are the inbound calls? What are the outbound calls? How, where are people, how many meetings are happening? Where are people falling off in the, in the system, in the funnel? We need to identify all those places where they are, and exit interviews, when a business is leaving, why are they leaving? What could have helped? And have that reported back to us quarterly. I'll stop there. I've got a few more, but I'm going to come back to them.
Yeah.
Thank you. Like Abby, I also have a list, so I'm sorry if this comes out all over the place. From what I was hearing from Carrie Sebold and what she brought to us last week, and then with her email, I feel like there's kind of two different concerns that need addressed, and I don't think it's all going to happen here tonight at this meeting. I think these will have to be future COW discussions. One of the concerns, I think, is trust, transparency, collaboration, communication with the city. And I would submit, this isn't the first time we've heard this. So we need to continue returning to this and saying, what's going on and how can we get better? And, so I don't want us to lose that side of it, and we need to continue having discussions about that and figuring out, because Carrie doesn't want this to go poorly. She didn't want this to, she wanted to work with the city. I know the city wanted to work with her. Something didn't happen, here we are, and we need to figure out how to be better in the future, and learn from the situation and from ones that we've heard in the past. The other concern that needs addressed is what to do with our downtown historic buildings that are vacant. There's a lot of them. They have a lot of issues. So we can continue saying it's not our problem, they're not going to get better. Or we can say, what can we do about this? We've just updated our building codes that were incredibly out of date, right? So a right step in the right direction. We need to figure out incentives for our property owners so that they don't have vacancies or that we can help them get their buildings up to being usable, so that we can have developers come in. We do have a person in a position in our Economic Development Department, Anthony, whose job it is to reach out to interested parties who want to come into Batavia. So we, that is part of the city's job. And we have codes, and we need to hold property owners to those codes as much as possible. I know that we try to find ways to be business-friendly by sometimes being lenient, I totally understand that, but we are also not being business-friendly to all the other businesses in downtown when we don't hold certain property owners to certain standards. So when we have vacancies all over our downtown, it hurts our other businesses. And so we need to figure out how to hold property owners accountable. And we have a downtown plan, and so why would we have a plan if we're not going to invest into our downtown in helping properties not be vacant? So those are my current thoughts.
Yeah, let me just give a very quick history lesson here. There's about three spots in downtown that have serious problems surrounding the buildings. And right up here at Houston and Batavia Avenue is the old Avenue Motors Car Dealership, which was one of the first Chevy dealerships in America. It should have a historical marker on it because of that building. But at one point, there was a gas tank right out in the front, and you used to pull in there and get your gas when I was a little kid. And that gas tank, I don't know if we got them all out of there or not, but there's, there's still tests have been done on that site rather recently, and we're still finding gasoline.
Yep, they, the, we approved the Highway Authority Agreement and the Groundwater Ordinance, and so now they'll be able to get their no further remediation letter from IEP A after years and years of cleaning that up.
So we got, well, we have that in that building. Then the AquaViva, which is down here at the bottom of the hill, I could show you pictures of that building with five 25,000-gallon gas tanks standing on that property. And for years, that was where you, the Fees family owned it, and they filled it for all their customers they were selling gas and oil to. And there was apparently a lot of spillage there. So anytime anybody goes in there and wants to look at that property, immediately they get the environmental tests, and there's all kinds of issues on Houston Street going from Batavia Avenue down to the bottom of the hill. They're there. You get over here on the property that we're talking about on North River Street, I grew up right around the corner from that building, so I can remember its history very early on. For a long time, that was a railroad track ran down to that building, that's where the bike trail is now. And they, the farmers used to come in there with their various products, and they would put their milk and their cream and everything else into the, in that area, and a lot of stuff was spoiled there over the years. Then when they left, a guy who came in there and was making some types of bathroom furniture, like toilet stools and stuff like that, and he had that business going in there. And then eventually Phil Elstrom came in, and he had a business called Bader Publishing. And Phil Elstrom and I are old friends going back probably 50 years. And Elstrom had this business in which he, he published catalogs and calendars and stuff for banks, and then he sold, put their bank's name on it, and he sold them all over the place, and he had a very successful business. But if you went into that building when Phil was in there, and he had a guy by the name of Jerry King who kind of ran it for him, he was a friend of mine, they had all kinds of stuff constantly being spilled on the floor as far as ink. And he used to joke that if you walked in there, you could leave your footprints all the way from the north end of the building to the south end of the building with all the ink that was on the ground there. And Phil used to joke about, well, someday somebody will have to clean all this up. Well, then Phil went upstairs and took over an abandoned area and built what probably is one of the most beautiful apartments in Batavia up there on the upper floor, at least it used to be. And he was in there, and then eventually the restaurants came in, and then they kind of took over Bader Publishing, and I don't know what all happened in there then, but that, these buildings have had a lot of different use. And when we recently got the federal grant to build, through Congressman Underwood to build, acquire a building for our food pantry and clothes closet, we looked at several of these properties to try to move in, and every one of them, because it was a federal grant-funded, we had to go and bring in the environmental testers. And I'll tell you right now, Avenue Motors, which Laura and I looked at very seriously, that baby flunked the test as recently as a year ago or whenever it was. I mean, it said, there, there's just all kinds of stuff in the walls, underneath it, et cetera, et cetera. And I, I've talked to other people who've called me as the liquor commissioner and wanted to talk about AquaViva, and they keep saying, well, they're telling me there's environmental issues here that nobody seems to want to clean up on. And as I think we just heard from Carrie when she gave her talk, I mean, there's, there's over in that building that's still there, there's, there's environmental things that are still in that building.
35 North Water?
I haven't heard of anything there.
North River Street?
For them to sell the building when they sold, when Fees has sold it, they had to have something clean on it.
Yeah.
Because there's no way you can do a sale or a transfer, and that was, I think, in the 80s that they moved out to the industrial park. You can't do that. The business I work for at 27 North Batavia Avenue, we have test wells on the Avenue Chevy property, because we were required to put test wells there. There's some in the city's parking lot, and there's some out in the street, because they have to be able to test that on a yearly basis.
I don't think we ever had gas over on North River Street. We had ink.
Yeah.
And we had other things that were always being spilled, and, you know, there was a lot of stuff being shipped in and out on the railroad cars that used to sit there and load up and whatever. So, I mean, there's just been, those buildings have had a lot of use, and right now, all three of them are kind of sitting there as our problem children. And, you know, I had a gentleman call me and wanted to talk about buying the building across the street that we now have up for, I think we're going to tear it down hopefully, that's the, what do we call in that building now, it used to be?
Tin Shop over here on River?
Yeah, the one on Rivers, it's been, it doesn't have a toilet or-
Yeah, the Tin Shop.
Yeah, Tin Shop. I had a guy call me and say, well, I'll tell you what, I'll buy that Tin Shop from me for $125,000 if the city will give me a loan for $250,000. So, you know, it's, there's a lot of dealing, but we've got these, I'll call them problem children around here that, I don't know of any of them, they're all still sitting here kind of in our face, and somebody's going to have to spend quite a bit of money. And our building department's doing a great job, and, and I look at their faces over there, and they all know what I'm talking about. They've been through it several times, and they just keep coming back and back and back at us. So I don't know if we need to have some special meetings and talk about the problem children we have in buildings of downtown Batavia, but we better, if you, if that's what you want to do, you better be prepared to spend a lot of money to get those babies back into shape.
So, so first off-
Jim? Oh, sorry. Hold on. Dustin's next.
Let's follow on that a bit. First, I want to make a brief note that a lot of this represents kind of a hidden cost of car dependence, like, how much of this is due to car infrastructure that is leading to long-term costs that we're now running into? Okay, that's my soapbox. My actual point, does the IEP A offer any sort of grants or other programs to help remediate properties?
My understanding is that there is a program called LUST, which is the Leaking Underground Storage Tank Fund, and it is for a certain, Scott knows, this is for a certain list of tanks identified prior, that were installed prior to 1971.
The state fire marshal has, has a basically a list of the different tanks that are in any jurisdiction, and there is a fund that anybody that owns a tank contributes to, and then that is for the cleanup and removal of tanks. So you have to, you know, apply through their program to, you know, get those tanks removed. And there, it does take time to get through that process if you're going to get those grant funds.
Does any, like, you know, maybe advise property owners that this exists and help get the ball rolling at least?
Sorry, what was the?
Sorry, I was saying, could the city help advise property owners that this program exists and maybe get the ball rolling?
We have. In fact, you know, I've been contacted by a former gas station property, and we do make them aware that there is that program.
Okay. Jim?
Minor point, and then I promise I'll shut up. So when it comes to this issue, I think we're kind of acknowledging we have a project. We have a new project, right? And like any good project, the first part of it is discovery, right? Like, what is our current setup, right? I mean, Carrie, Carrie did some homework for us, right? We have to do more homework, right? So, so what I would like to do, because we're not going to settle tonight, it really gets down to prioritization, we're, we're, we're going to get the biggest value for our buck. And the question is, is this it? Is resolving this building is going to give us that return that Abby spoke to that's going to be dramatic and make it worthwhile? However, we don't have our hands around what the problem actually is across the board, right? So, so discovery is the first part.
So would that be a request for every building in downtown to, what level of discovery do we just want to do a search to see if any environmental information exists on the internet? Do we want to do Phase Ones on every building in the downtown? Because that's about a $9,000 per building proposition. And that's, but Phase One is just a paper investigation to determine what were the prior uses and what could possibly be there.
I think the biggest thing is to identify that, and when somebody comes into us and asks, hey, we need to do something, you know, we're looking at this building and this building, do we know of anything on it? You know, what should our first step be before we throw, you know, $50,000 at plans and, you know, all the other stuff you're going to do?
I don't think that's an ordinary part of due diligence in a commercial real estate deal, is you hire an environmental consultant to look at those things. And the city is not, we don't have an on-staff person who is qualified to do a Phase One report.
Tony?
Yeah, Chris, you brought up private property. It's, it's very difficult to do so, but I want to point out, we own a lot of property that we've bought. So this isn't something new that we've been trying to turn things around. I've been on the council here for some pretty big purchases that have been made. Five acres just across the river between four properties. We've been wanting to get that developed. It's not like we're sitting back and just looking at these properties and saying, hey, nothing's happening here. We've had some potential to try to do it. We have been making investments, and that, you know, you know, a lot of people, a lot of you are new on council, you don't realize that, that we've been having these discussions. Don't, don't discount to say, oh, you've been sitting around doing nothing. There are properties that are very problematic in this town. Yes, there, we could be holding them more accountable, but I couldn't agree more that a private real estate deal, you know, there, there has to be due diligence done. That will, that will, that can have as much impact on driving the owner to correct things when they see their property value is plummeting because they're not willing to, to bring it up to code, because they're not willing to make it marketable. They're just sitting back waiting for it to happen. So, you know, we can't be, you know, shelling out money to help, you know, property owners make money. We got our own property we need to get developed. That's what we should, we need to be focusing on and, and get that going. So, yes, there's some more discussion that has to happen here, but don't discount the efforts that have been made. You know, River Street here, we're not done with River Street, you know, but we own a lot of property on there. The whole Larson Becker property, the one in Washington, we took a church down, cleaned that up. Boardwalk Shops is on property we own. That's, there's, there's four properties there, over five acres in our downtown area that, that can be developed and are ready to be developed now. It's not something that we're not, we have not been, been considering or planning to do. So I take a little exception to say that, oh, we've been, you know, this is a great town we live in, we've had great councils, and we've had great staffs, and that's what's making, made it a great town. So I think there's, there's a lot of responsibility for, for property owners, private property owners, and maybe our role is to hold them more accountable.
I think, Chris has been waiting for a while.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have much to say now, because ultimately, I just stole a lot of my thunder, but that is, what you said is exactly correct. And I also just wanted then reiterate that the City of Batavia is not a bank. We're not, and we're not in the business of giving out loans to people, no interest, interest, whatever, because what if those loans default then? You know how many times businesses, people have great ideas, you're going to make a lot of money, this business is going to last forever, and they're gone within 12 months? Then what's the city going to do with this no-interest loan that we just gave out? I mean, we're not a bank. Also, we're not a real estate company. As Alderman Malley just said, we already own a bunch of property. It's not our business to then go and buy other property, remediate it, and then fix it up so that the owners who are sitting on it can get bailed out. I mean, anybody who wants property, as Alderman Malley just said, there's plenty of property here that is fully remediated, ready to go, buildable, for sale right now, anybody who wants it. And we will do everything we can to promote that, we've been trying to. So I also, as Alderman Malley said, take great exceptions to anything that has been said that tries to negatively portray the efforts of staff and council as it relates to ongoing development in this town. All the city council and staff wants is for this town to be successful, at least past city councils and the city council I've been on anyway.
Chris and I just see eye to eye here, doesn't always say-
Yeah. It happens. Planets align too, so.
Yeah. Tim?
No, I, I'll kind of agree across the board. I think, I think there could be multiple things that are true, right? I think councils have passed and staffs have passed, or whoever, doesn't matter, again, to anyone's point, we dropped the ball, right? So we're, somehow we're allowing people not to follow the rules and get away with it, right? it, right? So, and I think what we miss here sometimes, well, no one's brought it up, but I mean, the intangibles here are so important. These people talk, they're, you know, and what I mean by these people is investors, people who do things like this, right? Either whether that be the monetary side of it or whether that be the actual business owners themselves. I think sometimes it sounds to me like, maybe on occasion, and, and again, no, no one, I'm not pointing fingers or whatever, it's just, it is what it is, let's put the facts on the table and correct it, but we've lost sight of who our customer is, right? I mean, the building owner, in my opinion, is our partner, right? And then the, the potential business owner, and say they do, say they're both, right? Then they do act as both. They're both a partner and a customer of ours. Those are unique situations. Everyone's handled uniquely, but a business owner needs to remain a partner of the community, or I mean, I'm sorry, a building owner needs to remain a partner of the community, full stop. And I think 100%, we need to hold them accountable. Now, what does that look like, right? And let's do it in a common sense way. Let's bring owners, I think probably more on a one-to-one basis, in, right? Because everyone's in different situations and everyone's in different spots. And we just, again, want to put the facts on the table and say, "How can we help? Let's not be a burden here. Let's not say, oh, it's us city that..." Because all these building owners want their buildings nice and great too, right?
They want it paid for. They want the upgrades that they need paid for.
Right. And so, let's see what that looks like. I don't, maybe it leads to, hey, we are going to have to enforce certain things that you're not going to like from here on out and that's just the way it is. If, if they can't, I mean, I understand there's certain situations, again, economically, where maybe, you know, the, the building is technically worth nothing or whatever, however that works out, you know, with the banks or whatever needs to be done from a remediation standpoint. But oftentimes, there are ways to get at the equity in buildings or, you know, again, just spitballing, that's one little thing, but there's ways to, you know, collaborate and, and just come together and say, "Hey, what can we, what can we do together? Here are their issues, how do we assist?" And then, you know, potentially bring that to council. Say it is astronomical costs and that's it, and then we all vote no. And that's that, you know? It's just, I want, you know, there's things like I've, I've heard from a personal friend, business owner here who came out of the Boardwalk Shops, went into the Mercantile and she can't stand it because it, it's not ADA compliant and she has, you know, she needs the wheelchair accessibility and certain other things. Owner won't comply, they've come, you know, she's claimed to come to the city, the city goes to the owner, owner doesn't comply. It's like, at what extent do we, you know, what avenues do we have to hold these people accountable? I'm not, I need to look into that more myself, but, you know, at some point, you own the building and the building is in our town and we, you know, we are making the decisions, you know, to, to better this town and we can't do it with these sources. We can't have somebody like this have to pay a half a million dollars to, to, you know, drop into a, into a building that, you know, just to get it to a place where, okay, now we gotta, now we can start type of thing. So, anyway, all that said, I think we need to do something, we need to do it quickly. I'm half glad this came out publicly because it's just, you want transparency, here's full transparency, folks, you know? This, this is it. And, you know, I, I hope we can, we can correct it and, you know, to the Seabolds, I'm sorry that, you know, that you guys kind of went through this, but, you know, some things people have mentioned are, are true and, and there's other things the city, I think, could have done better as well, council and, and staff together. So, with that said, I would like to continue the conversation and, you know, again, hopefully bring those owners in and see what we can do to work with them. I know it's been a long time, I know everyone knows everybody, but let's, let's give it a shot.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with a lot of what Alderman Lancey just shared with us. I, you know, to kind of put it bluntly, you know, we, we kind of need to make the property owners who aren't complying feel some pain, right? We have carrots and we have sticks. On the stick side, we have our code enforcement and we need to make sure that specifically for these key areas, they're feeling the pain of not complying. Because not complying means that these properties remain vacant. It means that these properties deteriorate more. It means that the cost of fixing it just goes up and up and up. At some point, we need to make a cost prohibitive for them to keep that property or fix it, right? Might put us in a tough spot where we have now an abandoned property, but hey, that kind of opens up some doors for us. Then we can kind of take some stuff on, we have some more action, not great. Or what we hope happens is it gets them to actually do what they have to do to make these properties marketable. So, I do think we need to look at the carrots and the sticks. And on the stick side, they got to feel a little pain, right? They've got to start feeling the pain of not complying. So, we kind of hold them accountable on that front. You know, I, I don't believe that anybody walked into any of this maliciously. You know, there's, you know, let's talk about kind of a little bit of the, the tough part of this. There's a narrative of a meeting where one side says it was not cordial, the other side said it was cordial within the limits of truth-telling. And as a divorce mediator, I can tell you that you're both probably right. It's probably true that as things progress, people were more, were ruder than they thought they were and that people took things that were intended well wrong, that happens, that's how it is. So, I, I take both of those narratives with a big grain of salt and I think both sides can do great in kind of just doing a little soul searching, really kind of seeing how we interface and then turning that into change. That's my lead into saying that I totally agree. I think staff here actually is doing hard work, that they're trying very hard to do this. And I'm sure an elected council is frustrating to work with. I feel like we sometimes are throwing a moving target at you all. And here's a moving target, right? The question was asked, what does discovery look like? What specifically would we want? It doesn't have to be every property downtown, but it certainly could be vacant ones in our historic district. We have a pretty narrow historic district and the occupancy rate in that historic district is such that I think we could probably target specifically the vacant properties specifically in the historic district. That kind of makes sense to me as maybe a target we can point at.
And is it doing a phase one on those or just doing?
I'd like to, I'd like to see what that means, right? So, maybe we identify those properties and put a cost to that. You said $9,000 per property. I don't know, is it 10 properties or is it 500 properties? That would probably change my answer to that. So, I think further discussion on that, some exploration would make a lot of sense. And if it's less than a phase one, well, then what is the next step? I do realize that when you buy a property, it's your responsibility to do your due diligence, but if we can lower that bar even just a little bit, right? We don't have to do it, but if we can, it may help specifically in this historic district, get the juices rolling a little bit, right?
And we may be limited in our ability to do that because there's a questionnaire that has to be answered by the current property owner and as well as going onsite. And some property owners may say...
No, yeah. And, and I think...
Because some property gets purchased.
I'm certain a staff memo on this would probably highlight the challenges and the risks as well as how we might be able to mitigate those risks, right? I mean, you guys do a great job in putting those memos together so we can see the financial costs, we can see why it might be hard, so that then we can have an informed, you know, discussion on if this is the right path.
I do have a question. You know, if we were to go down this road and do this like level one and get the basics for these properties from an environmental standpoint, what potential liability could we put the city at if we were to have this on hand and give this to somebody and then they go in and they discover even additional information? Are we putting the city at risk by providing that? Or do we say, "Hey, well, we're just providing this, you're supposed to do the due diligence"?
I think Scott wants to answer that.
Yeah, I, I, the concern we would have is that, you know, we are not the due diligence agent for buyers or sellers. And if we start going too far down that road, we open up ourselves as potential liability. I'd love the city attorney to opine on that, but I mean, I would be very careful about how far we can go on that because we could, we could open ourselves to some trouble and things like that. Somebody may say, "Well, you know, the city said, oh, all that's in there is a tank and they discovered, they discovered lead." And then they say, "Well, city, you didn't discover everything that was in there."
Right. And that's my point for this.
Right. And, and just one thing, if I may, we are, as part of our economic development efforts, we are working on a database right now that will talk about all the vacancies in downtown. We'll be presenting that in the near future, so that is something that's in progress. And then we could use that as, as something that we could use for talking about the vacancy properties and maybe, maybe partnering that with our downtown historic buildings, the significant buildings, and maybe we can look at those two groups together and say, "Okay, these are the buildings we really need to concentrate on."
We know about them, yeah.
First off, let me apologize if I came off as too strong. That was really not my intention, nor to put any senior members of council in in active light. However, you know, I, I did do, quite frankly, the first thing, Scott just said it, there is a lack of information, you know what I mean? So, the first thing I did was I walked around downtown, I just wanted to do one, two, three, and I've been here long enough to where, hey, I know it's been empty for a year, I know it's been empty for three years, you know what I mean? You're talking about tens of thousands of square feet. This is not like, there's a lot of properties there. So, you know, TIF funds are for this stuff. This is what it's for. I mean, we, we went through the effort to put up seven of them, right? So, so this is kind of what TIF money is for. And TIF money can be for things like discovery. And I don't think we need to do an official, like, dive on this, you know, as far as like, are there environmental, I'm sorry, are there environmental issues here? It may just be a matter of, here are the properties in the historic district, right? Here's their vacancy rate that we know of, right? Does it have an environmental issue that we're aware of? Yes or no? We don't need to describe it, it's just yes or no, right? And, and so the intention is that gives, that can get us directionally correct as far as which properties we should be looking at from an investment perspective.
Dustin?
Quick on that, that is also a good way to help those smaller business owners who don't have the upfront studies to a lot of, like, unknowns that a larger developer, they can tank those unknowns like nobody's business because they have capital elsewhere that they're, that they're working off of. But the small-scale risk takers in our community sometimes don't have the capacity for that much risk, so smaller scale stuff that we can do as a city goes a long way towards building up that ecosystem.
To the point, we do have to cover that with the city attorney though, because if that small business is then relying on what we said instead of doing their own due diligence, that is not doing them any favors because they may discover something later that could be a huge expense for them.
One other thing I thought about, if I may, there may be some issues with exposing environmental issues that maybe a building owner doesn't want people to know because of whatever is going on. So, if we start getting too far into the weeds, that might also present its own issue too, so.
I would like a legal opinion on that before we talk more about that. Leah?
I just want to first just kind of respond to Tony. Tony, I really appreciate your legacy here on council along with Alan and a few others. You know, you have a lot of experience and time invested in the city. And, but I think there's a beautiful balance between fresh new perspectives and ideas and like, just that we can all work through these conversations together with both what you bring and then what the new voices bring. And the, the empty properties that the city owns are not spaces that something like the Seabolds can go put a family-owned business on. And so, that's kind of like, that's more of large development, large developers that we, you know, the city's looking into. So, that's, in my mind, a completely different conversation than what this was around tonight was, you know, trying to find spaces, which there's not many of, even for our Boardwalk Shop members who are graduates, graduating each year, they struggle and a lot of them have to leave Batavia and go find other places. We just don't have brick and mortar for small businesses. And I think that's just the conversation that we're trying to have here tonight is, what can we do as a city to create more space for small businesses, brick and mortar in our downtown? And there's a lot of hurdles. We, we're hearing them all here tonight and this is not going to be an easy fix. We are surrounded though by other historic downtowns and some of them are thriving, some of them don't seem to have a single empty space in their downtown. Others, if you go farther away, are quite empty and vacant, so I don't know, I'm sure Laura does a lot to collaborate with other city administrators and, you know, we talked to, I'm sure you all talk to each other, but just what creative ways are other downtowns doing to help, you know, incentivize their property owners and what can we do to, to just keep moving in that direction, so.
Yeah, my point was bringing the idea of these five acres that we have was, you know, we, we have been making big investments and buying stuff when I don't think we should necessarily be the bank. But there has, you know, over the last eight years I've been on council, countless number of grants to help businesses get up, get started. You know, you can walk down the street and point out, you know, Laura had mentioned a few of them, the Comedy Vault, New Moon Vegan, several more on that street, I can tell you. You know, there has been a lot of support for the little developer that wants to pursue their dream. We've been actually, I think, done very well with that, with a number of businesses and I just don't want us to lose sight of what the things that we have accomplished and use those as, how do we, you know, make more of that happen? That's, I, I think that's, we're not starting from zero, is, was my point.
Abby?
I wanted to circle back to something Leah said earlier to and flag it for an upcoming discussion if others will join me, is that kind of the, the trust and collaboration and communication aspect and the, and the frustration that I, I felt in my body while Carrie was speaking and while rereading the, the notes as well, that sometimes everything, everything that is said could be correct, how it is said or how it is received and that feeling and how you're left to feel can be a challenge too. We spent a lot of money on a permit improvement processing study. I would like to bring up another conversation to revisit that and the progress and the metrics and how, what is being done to make this process from that kind of just human-scale emotional frustration, what is happening and what is improving and what else needs to be done still and what do we need to signal out to the community that is still being worked on? And kind of line up what the recommendations were in that study with the experience that we just went through and the details that we now know or other anecdotes, as Leah had mentioned. I do continue to hear complaints just about the process, just about how frustrating it can be to work with the city and how frustrating contractors that don't want to work here and stuff like that. So, I don't, I don't want that, that comment to be missed and I would like that to be brought up for another, another agenda item in the near future.
I kind of wanted to wrap this up at 9:30. I think we're about there. I guess I read through this Carrie's notes she sent to us and then Laura's response. And one of the things I told myself about tonight that I was going to just sit here and listen. And one of the things I, I feel like we've forgotten, I mean, all the other good discussions, great subjects, everything we needed to talk about, I still felt like at the end of the night I wanted to say, is there a way we can figure out how to help them locate this business in Batavia? And that's really the one question I want to find an answer for. I guess if it was me and I'm trying to spend the money on it and doing what I'd love to do, open my bar and grill, I would look at which is the least likely to be the crazy overrun in a budget. You know, and I looked at the three that they looked at and I think probably to me, it's the one on South Batavia Avenue. It's got, I think, one tank that's there. If it doesn't have anything in it and they can fill it in place, it's nothing as far as cost in a project to what they said they were scaling for that corner. That's to me a great location. It gives you a blank slate to work on. I would like to figure a way that we can, I think that's in TIF 3, right? That we could allocate some money out of TIF 3 if that worked to try to help for the remediation or a way to remediate that property, to make that happen there. And then that gets something that's been vacant for five years or more minimum, you know, in a very prominent place on Batavia Avenue. So, you know, to me, I don't know what their feelings are on it. That's where I think I would like to focus, what came out of all this discussion are all good things. We need to know, we have a few things we should probably look at and fix in our processes and in our department. And, you know, the communication side of it. But I also feel like, you know, there's an opportunity for us, the city, to step forward and try to complete this dream, not just for them, but for the downtown. Because I think it's really important that, you know, each one of these little blocks means something. Each one of these empty stores means something. When somebody drives through downtown and they don't see any empty stores and, you know, perfect flowers hanging on the, you know, planters and 5,000 people in a weekend walking downtown. walking downtown, to me, that's something that we have to keep moving. We can't just let up. We can't say, you know what, we'll worry about that when somebody comes in to talk about it. We need to figure out how to make those areas. And again, one of them is enforce the codes we have. If, you know, we would have known this stuff was happening, the last time, I think we threw $50,000 at that building over there, our next door to it, in between North River Street and Pal Joey's, the last, I think the last iteration. We've thrown multiple grants at several of those buildings, you know, repeat, one building, you know, one business comes in, it fails, the next business needs something to help rebrand in what they want to do. So we give them money, you know, all that stuff adds up bad. I think we just have to figure a way when it's a situation like this, where it's somebody, to me, going to invest a lot of money into a building if they were to build one. And that site seems to me the easiest one, I think, for us to help with, to try to get that to happen. And again, on a corner that sat vacant, that means more to me than, you know, reusing an old building buried down along River Street. Personally, I'd like to see everything from Pal Joey's to the alley go away and start over. I mean, you know, the reality is we got our Walgreens over here. It'd been a great to see a bulldozer from Water Street to the river and start over. I mean, that we could have done, but you know, I don't know that those are going to happen. We're going to look at some smaller plans, some stuff where we have to help somebody that, you know, wants to start their dream business and, and make that work. And if that leaves us with a building, a concept and a couple of residential units, I'm all for that. If we have to spend 100 grand to do it, I think we can figure that out. And I think this council would support that if we knew that's what we were going to get in the end, you know, to, to that hurdle across, to get rid of whatever environmental issue is there. I mean, we were smart enough when we bought property, we put, what, 200 grand in escrow to clean it up because you know you're going to spend it on something you have no idea what's there under the building and on the property. So I, I want to thank you for bringing that to us and, you know, my goal, you know, I've always felt one of the things I have to do is look 20, 50 years down the road. And if you're willing to build a building somewhere, I think we need to be willing to help you do that, especially in downtown. So as long as eight people will, or seven people will join me, we could do that. Right? Do you want to say anything tonight?
Thank you.
Need to use the mic just so we can get it on.
Thank you for inviting me to speak. I just wanted to make sure and clarify a little bit that I was never looking for a handout. That was never my intention whatsoever. My intention is I've been here for 20 years and again, I've heard the repeat of it's been frustrating to build here. And I just wanted to bring a situation to light that has been heard over and over and over again by many business owners, including myself. And I had the opportunity to bring three different experiences. So I was never looking for a handout. I don't ever expect a handout. I think that's apparent by the money and the time that I've invested in this. And I have done my due diligence and I've come to roadblocks on all three of them. So the due diligence cost me $100,000 and at this point I brought it to the city because of that. The phase one has actually caused me $1,800. I have an invoice for it that I paid for on the AquaViva site, so it's not $9,000. So while it's not inexpensive, it's not $9,000, which is probably comforting for many. And then I think somebody also, thank you, Leah, mentioned that a lot of the properties that are available that the city owns, there's two points to that. One, they didn't fit my business model. There's a very certain business model and sector that I want to go after. Secondly, we did actually try calling on one of them and Jeff Catwoliter is my, my real estate agent here. We called on one of them and it took over seven weeks for somebody to get back to us that is owned by the city. So again, another frustrating part that I'm not here to complain and point fingers, but I'm saying there's a lot of opportunity to make improvements to help bring in development in the city of Batavia. I, I'm shocked. I didn't hear, I didn't expect to hear, let's help this idea out. That's not what I came for. That's not why I brought that present. I would love to see the city of Batavia work towards being more friendly towards small businesses. And if I'm one of them, that's awesome. I would love it. The ultimate goal is to just try to help this community grow. So thank you very much.
Okay, we'll move on to item 12, which is project status. Sorry, what are next steps? We're just going to move that to another discussion topic on another call. We're going to continue the conversation.
I think there were at least three different discussions. And then also for us to develop a memo regarding the inventory of vacant buildings in the downtown and pluses and minuses of doing the different types of analysis on those. So.
I mean, if, if anyone would join me, I think it's probably worth, I know, you know, everyone talks and whatever, but it's probably worth another one of these before we go off and so that we don't send you guys off into the wild blue yonder and come back with something that, you know, this council doesn't feel usable or wasn't what we were looking for or whatever. So just to.
Yeah, I think we have a, you know, a quick 15 minute discussion on, here's three points, you know, we could.
Here's what we thought we heard from you guys during all that.
And we can narrow that down so that we can keep a scope that's doable.
Yeah.
For, you know, economic development.
Just so we have clear, clear tasks, clear goals.
Get something back we can use.
Okay.
Awesome.
So in our project status, Jennifer mentioned that we have the Slow Down Summer video campaign now. And these videos are, I think they're just great. I'm so happy with the production company that we worked with to create these. The other nice thing about it is it was a really nice partnership with the school district to be able to utilize those students' stories and all of that. This Saturday is Sweet Talk with your city council. Your city council will be down at the farmer's market from eight to noon and handing out some sweet donuts. And you can chat up things that you've been wanting to talk to, talk with city council about down there. And as we know, Saturday, June 14th is Flag Day here in Batavia. And so following the farmer's market at 1 o'clock PM here at City Hall, there is going to be a historical talk, a gentleman who has done a tremendous amount of research about Dr. Segrande and the history of Flag Day. And right following thereafter are all of the festivities at the Peg Bond Center from two to four, I believe. And then at four o'clock, our VFW is holding a Hanging with Heroes and is an opportunity to hang out with some of the veterans in our community. There'll be a lot of family activities. I also hear that there will be beer. So if anybody's interested in that. So that Hanging with Heroes sounds like a lot of fun as well. The annual TIF meeting is next Monday at 10 o'clock AM. That's all of the different taxing bodies. And we go through each one of the TIFs and how money has been spent in each one of those TIFs over the last year and what the balances are and what some potential future plans are. Both fire and police will be holding testing for new eligibility lists. I think it was the police, they put out the notice of the test and they've already received 25 applications. So it's a really good showing. We're, we're really encouraged by that. And then also the police department has started the bike patrols where we go out and not only are trying to make sure that all of the rules out there are being enforced, but we also like to do a little bit of catching people doing things right and maybe give them, you know, a little certificate for an ice cream cone or something like that too. But we've had bike patrols for the last three years and it's been a really successful program that we've included, it started off being just one officer and now we have two officers doing it. And I think that's all I have unless anybody has questions.
I just wanted to give a quick shout out to Public Works and police and fire, all the electricians, I mean, per usual, absolute rock stars during the most recent weather event, which I think we made Good Morning America. So it was, it was big enough, but amazing job, amazing communication. I mean, I was bragging about us to a couple of people that, that I was with the other day. So thank you.
At the staff meeting today, we were talking about this and Andrea said they literally had to order people to go home and rest because they were at the limit of their overtime and they were like, we don't want to go home. We want to get this finished for people. And people, it was so amazing to see people step out of their, like, you know, if a fireman saw that a log needed to be moved or if Andrea needed to put on a vest and become a direct traffic and, you know, it was just amazing to see people do everything that needed to be done in that moment. And, and also our residents too, showing up for one another and showing appreciation for all of the things that these people do. And Steve Allen.
Amazing.
Amazing job.
Get some sleep.
I'll even say it's nice to see that we had, you know, people show up from, I think, Geneva and North Aurora, you know, as well. So, you know, with IP.
Geneva, Geneva gave us a whole crew of linemen to relieve our linemen so that they could get some sleep. And we also have had help for street sweeping. Bad timing. Our sweets, our street sweepers out of commission right now. So two from Aurora and then we'll have another one from St. Charles. And numerous calls from other communities just saying, we're here if you need something.
I also wanted to echo excellent work. Guy allowed great feedback. I also wanted to mention a little PSA. Since the weather event, I've gotten in the last 36 hours, easily 50 spam calls from roofing contractors. So I would like to make note, if you, you know, maybe be a bit cautious about those. And if you do have any roofing concerns or roofing issues caused by the storm, reach out to an established local business for your best bet.
And if they do show up at your door, ask if they've registered at the city. If they haven't, just walk away.
A hundred percent.
And tell them no.
It's really fun to ask them if they have a.
I don't know if, Jen, I joked about it today. I answer my phone now. Your number 35 today of me to say goodbye and hang up on them.
I started asking if they have a, what's the word, a permit for solicitation. And they hang up immediately.
Right, they do.
I don't even answer.
I mostly don't, but.
I left for lunch on Monday. I have a one mile commute to my house and I saw seven trucks and somebody walking the block on every block between my house and my job.
We, we.
It's just, it's crazy.
Entire regions.
Two hours, two hours after the storm ended.
Yeah.
I mean, we didn't even have 31 or 25 open yet and they're already out in trucks in our neighborhood.
Outrageous.
Return.
Oh, we have more questions?
He had another.
Yeah, you know what, one, one minor item. So as part of, after the Seabold conversation, I had to take a look at, you know, how we, are we potentially generating unintentional friction for, for people coming into town to do business? And I am aware over the years of a couple of situations where business owners were complaining to me or were just complaining in general to the world around working with our Historical Preservation Commission, okay, just because they had to go through a check for something that had nothing to do with historical preservation and the property wasn't even historical and, and stuff like that, just happened to be in the district. So as a result of that, you know, I did look at what other towns are doing. And this is just a note for a late discussion at a later date. If we look at like how Geneva has it set up and even Neighborhood has it set up, they have a fully itemized list of when the historical commission needs to be engaged and when they don't have to be engaged. Okay? I'll send you the links to it after tomorrow morning, but I think that's a worthy discussion. I think it'll make things easier for everybody because quite frankly, I don't think the historical commission wants to worry about the backdoor Riverside, right? So, so I think it goes both ways, right?
I just want to mention something, having been on historical preservation for a couple of years, and I think Jeff could probably speak to that too. There are different levels when a building comes depending on whether it's a contributing building or a non-contributing building of what the Preservation Commission has to do because sometimes if it's a non-contributing building, it really is just a, it breezes right through. It's not a big thing. So it might be helpful to have that as part of the discussion.
Yeah, and part of the discussion is should these properties even be bought to the historical commission or they could just, you know, just bypass entirely?
It adds a lot of like time to a schedule. And that is often what really hurts.
You can have a staff review versus having to wait for the HPC.
Yeah. And for example, I was speaking earlier, Riverside, they did not have air conditioning. So when they had to.
Yeah, that was brutal.
Yeah, so they, when they had to wait a month to go to HPC, it costs them thousands of dollars.
But they didn't install it for eight weeks after HPC. Happy unit.
Yeah. So I'll send some information, let's just get on.
Motion to adjourn.